Good morning. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you all for your attendance. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote to establish form, please.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz.
Supervisor Lee.
Here.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Gruh Hava.
Here.
But the record shows Supervisor Heinz is not present. All other board members are present.
Thank you. So, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Robert Caballero. He's a Trades Maintenance Specialist One with Pima County Facilities Management, and he's here. Okay, thank you so much for coming down and agreeing to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Caballero. Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
How long have you been with Pima County?
Uh, September will be eight years.
Oh, wow. So, can you tell us a little bit about what you do?
Um, we, I'm maintenance, so everything from building, I mean, coolers, drywall repair, remodels, I don't know.
Everything.
Everything, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you so-
Anything that falls under maintenance.
Well, thank you so much for, I know that the storms probably throw a lot of extra work your way.
Yeah, we're pretty busy right now.
Yeah, I wanna thank you, one, for taking the time to come out and for all you do for Pima County.
Of course.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Land Acknowledgement Statement. This will be read by Reyes Hernandez. He's a Pasca Yaki Outreach Coordinator with Pima County Recorder's Office. Thank you so much for being here.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Buenos dias, en tenebo que te malas, si me gustaste. Buenos dias a todos. Good morning to everybody here, especially if you've been viewing online. I'm Reyes Hernandez, a proud member of the Pasca Yaki Tribe. I work for the Pima County Recorders. I do the, I'm the Voter Outreach Coordinator for the Pasca Yaki Tribe, so, and to all Pima Counties.
Thank you.
On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial, and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homelands of the Ho'nam Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasca Yaki Tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive towards building ecopartnered relationships with Arizona tribal nations.
Thank you so much, and I know that you all are really busy right now.
Yes. Right now, we're in active elections for the primaries, so.
Yeah.
Getting a lot of calls and everything, so. And I'll be, I'll be posted at a site at the Pasca Yaki Tribe Wellness Center, so.
That's gonna be a busy time. Thank you for taking time out of all the things that you're doing to get ready for elections, to come down and read the land acknowledgement here.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, we have pause for pause with a little friend. Let's get some food.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kaylee. I'm the Public Information Officer for Pima Animal Care Center. I brought a little friend today. He's actually so new to us that he doesn't have a name quite yet, so if you decide to adopt him, you can decide what his name is gonna be. He was picked up by one of our animal protection officers. You can see, he was recently shaved. He had some matting, but he's doing better now, and he's looking for a home. He's a really cute little guy. I brought him today because, of course, he's really adorable, but also to remind everybody that we talk a lot about the large dogs, but we have small dogs, we have puppies, we have all kinds of beautiful animals that are looking for homes at the shelter. About five hundred, five hundred and twenty dogs today, so we are full, full, full. And I should mention, too, that in our cat ward, we're seeing a lot of kittens still, so it's still cat, or, I'm sorry, still kitten season. And we're also seeing a lot of seniors right now, quite a few senior kitties who could really use a foster home. Even a spare bathroom is much more room than they get in the kennel at the shelter, so. Lots of options to help if you're looking to help a critter this summer, and we've got plenty of them at the shelter who would love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And thank you for being here. So, before we get started with Call to the Public, I just wanted to take a moment to share some thoughts on the assassination attempt of our former president. I'm sure we've seen the news regarding this, and I join many of us in feelings of concern regarding this intensified political violence. President Biden said it perfectly in his Oval Office address on Sunday. While we may disagree, we are not enemies. We're neighbors, we're friends, we're coworkers, citizens, and most importantly, we are fellow Americans. We must stand together, no matter how strong our convictions, and we must never descend into violence. It's unfortunate, but true, that this community is no stranger to political violence. I welcome all to visit the January 8th memorial right outside here in the historic courthouse that honors nineteen people, including former U.S. Representative Gabby Giffords, who were shot by a lone gunman on January 8th, 2011. This memorial represents the unity our community shows in face of violence. No one should ever be afraid to participate in our democracy. In my decades of public service, from the Tucson Unified School District Governing Board to here at the Pima County Board of Supervisors, I'm well aware of emotions and tensions that arise when advocating for a cause that you support. With this said, on my term here as a supervisor serving the people of District Five, this board has seen direct threats of violence and anger. I wanna make it clear here in Pima County, we have done our best to ensure these meetings are safe and welcoming for all, not just for us as your elected representatives, but for the public, who have the right to take part in their local government and democracy and join these meetings with us. I say that because we have a couple of, we have twenty people for Call to the Public, which means every person gets two minutes. I've had some requests to sort of call people in order. I'm gonna go ahead and honor those for now. I just wanna make sure that we are very cognizant of insults, threats, whether they're veiled or not. Any kind of hate speech is not gonna be tolerated at all. So, I just wanna say that because I think for everyone here in the room, it's important for us to sort of stay, at least with an understanding, that we can disagree on every issue, but, and you can, and I believe you, everyone has the right to come and speak their mind here at the Call to the Public. But, you know, there have been calls on us elected officials to change how we do things. I'd like to not do that. I think that having this open access to your elected representatives is very important. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I have Robert Royce. Oh, citizens attending meetings shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, may be removed by the sergeant-at-arms if directed by the chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistling, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the chair who may direct offenders from the hearing room. Okay. So, with that, I have Robert Royce, Alan Young, and Roth Polo.
I have a three-minute presentation which won't fit into two minutes, so I'm not even gonna try. What I will do is, there seems to be some confusion as to where our religious liberties came from. So, let me clarify this. I will continue readings from this during the two minutes, but I don't have time for my three. The ordinance of religious freedom proposed by Jefferson in 1779 was both an argument and a bill. It asserted that the opinions and beliefs of men depend not on their own will but follow involuntarily the evidence proposed to their minds, that Almighty God hath created the mind free and manifested His supreme will that free it shall remain, by making it altogether insusceptible to restraint. That all attempts to influence it by temporal punishments or burdens or by civil incapacitations tend only to beget habits of hypocrisy and meanness, in our departure from the plan of the holy author of our religion, who being Lord of both body and mind, yet chose not to propagate it by coercion on either, as was in His almighty power to do, but to exalt it by the influence of reason alone. That the impious presumption of legislatures and rulers, civil as well as eclast, eclastical, eclastic, I'm sorry, who being themselves fallible and uninspired men, have assumed domination over the faith of others, setting up their own opinions as modes of thinking. I will continue later.
Thank you. We're gonna take a really quick pause. IT needs a moment.
Welcome to Bex. You're muted. You can press star six anytime to unmute yourself. You're being asked to unmute yourself. You're unmuted.
Okay, I think we're all set. Thank you. Alan Young, and if I've called your name, you're welcome to come up to these seats in the front here, followed by Roth Polo, Cheryl Lynn Young, and Mike Aaron. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alan Young. I'm a resident of Pima County. I am here to talk to the Board of Supervisors today about the Veterans Memorial Plaza. Dear Supervisors and Administrators, I come before you today as a retired veteran with over twenty-one years of service in the United States Air Force, Navy, or National Guard. I also want to represent the thousands of men and women in Pima County who are currently, or who have served, who have served in service to the United States of America. I am a past commander of the John P. Burns American Legion Post Thirty-Six here in Tucson, and am currently in my second year as the Commander for the Second District of the American Legion Department of Arizona, with responsibility for fifteen American Legion posts in southern Arizona. I'm here before you today in hopes of gathering information concerning a piece of property located on Ritchie Boulevard, surrounded by Pallaverty Road, Golf Links Road, and Aviation Boulevard. The property, for those who are unaware, is labeled as the Veterans Memorial Plaza. It is also home of the recently added Gold Star Family Memorial, thanks to the Woody Williams Foundation presentation and local Gold Star Mothers. To my knowledge, the property started as a transit park and ride facility in the early 2000s. I'm not sure if it was labeled as a Veterans Memorial at that time, but since its inception, the plaza has been severely neglected in upkeep and maintenance. Recently, the park was vandalized. The seals of the branches of service that are located on that memorial wall have been removed. I was hoping that the county was responsible for that. They took them down for maintenance, and they were to be replaced. I ran into a person from county maintenance. He said, "The county does not maintain that property. He was there only to change light bulbs," and referred me to Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation said they dump the trash once, once a week. Something needs to be done with that plaza. If you Google the property, the contact number that is listed is actually from my American Legion post. We do not own that property. I need some answers. On my way here today, I also noticed that the Korean Memorial, located at Keno Sports Complex, all of the flags, the service flags and the U.S. flag are tattered, and they need to be replaced. I'm willing to help. Please let me help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Roth Polo.
Morning. Abuse of power. Abuse of power. We got a two-minute illegit rule. Now, now you can throw anyone that you don't like what they say. I lived under communism, so I know a little bit of what it's like. From here to there, this BOS is run like the old Politburo. Stalin, Khrushchev, Yuriandropov. You throw a bone to those that you think might vote for you. You might even give them a plaque or two. Get their picture taken. Maybe the folks back there in the newspapers will put it up for them. But you are all walking in high cotton, while your constituents are not. They're barely surviving. Some of you, at a minimum, are socialist, if not communist, yet you like capitalism because you look for higher wages, while the rest of the folks are barely surviving. How do you sleep at night? Oh, I know. You went through the mattress door.
Cheryl Lynn Young?
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Lynn Young. I live at nine six nine North Rancho del Jefe. I'm here this morning because you'll see as the speakers come forward that there's a great deal of concern this year about election integrity. You're gonna hear a lot about chain of custody, and we are really looking to ensure that we can feel confident in our elections. And there was recently a minor incident that I think really indicates that we're not feeling very confident. And what this is, is that our sample ballots came in the mail, and along with our sample ballots, which up in one corner had a very small font that said the, the primary election was gonna be on July 30th. It also came with a great big folder of voting centers, which at the top, in big bold print, proclaimed that the primary election was gonna be held on August 30th. That's a month later than the real primary election. I don't know how many voters will be disenfranchised by thinking they have a whole nother month to vote, but I really feel that this is something that should be looked into. We need to know why our Elections Department cannot be more accurate in sending out information to all our registered voters, and I would really appreciate if you would look into it and make sure that we don't have these things happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Aaron, followed by Corey Stevens, Sarah Price, and Gary Olson.
Name is Mike Aaron. I'm a Pima County resident. As the lady said, here's the form. The July 30th is an inch long. The one on the inside is very big. You're dealing with older people in this community that can't see very well. They're not gonna see the little one. They're gonna see that big one because they're gonna go just find out where they can vote. Now, this is election fraud under the federal law. There was a gentleman who tweeted or posted a meme about texting your vote for Hillary Clinton to a number. He was indicted. He was arrested. He was found guilty, and he went to jail. Guess who the top people of this county are? You all. Now, Steve, he's a Republican, so he doesn't really count, because you didn't show it to him to get his approval. You all need to stand up and do something. And Lieutenant, voter fraud. All these people up here. Dave, voter fraud.
Please direct your comments to the board. Thank you. Corey Stevens?
Things that make you go hmm. Sample ballots being mailed to thousands of voters with primary date of August 30th, boldly plastered on every page above vote center locations. Surely, this is an unintentional mistake not to confuse voters. I don't think it is unreasonable to expect election integrity and accountability. So, who is it we should blame for no double checking of their work, an egregious oversight, a complete negligent failure, failure of the most basic job skills? Who will be held accountable? Housing illegals at the juvenile detention center. I do recall a time when Pima County Jail, Jail requested to house inmates at the very same wing that you are housing- wing that you are housing illegals at. This was in an attempt to save the county money and alleviate overcrowding at the jail. Judicial had an issue with this request, and it was denied. Can someone please explain how it is in any way different to now house illegal aliens at the very same wing of the juvenile detention center? These individuals are in county, are in the country pending a hearing warrant with notice to appear legal status. Didn't the county just spend a whole lot of wasted time and money on a blue ribbon commission trying to determine the need for a new jail and ways to alleviate overcrowding? Hmm, interesting how you all seem to have no problem wasting taxpayer dollars housing people who don't even belong here, and yet there are over 900 homeless encampments in Pima County and God knows how many homeless people because you only count them when they are sheltered. By the way, taxpayers are paying a lofty salary for District 2 Supervisor not to have Matt Hines show up on time. Please show up and make him accountable. He needs to be here.
Sarah Price.
Hi, my name is Sarah Price. We made a public request for chain-
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. We made a public request for chain of custody for documents for the 2022 election, general election. We have found many inconsistencies and possible fraud. After each election, the canvas report is the sole document used to certify the election. We assume that both the county recorder and the elections director are correctly and lawfully assembled, have assembled the numbers. We trust the information on the canvas report as true and correct. And correct is negligent. True and correct. The supervisors, recorder, and election director took an oath that they must adhere to. In the 2022, this body certified the 2022 election in a virtual meeting held on November 22nd. This board received the canvas report only a day before the virtual meeting. Today, we present evidence that the 2022 election never, should never have been certified. Due to other research, we've found not a single election since 2016 or beyond should have been certified. Many errors in the chain of custody. We must follow the law.
Gary Olson, followed by Sharon Fickers, Kathleen Splitsdoser, and Melinda Sherwin.
Good morning, Gary Olson, Pima County, since 91. The 2019 and 2023 Arizona election procedures manuals are quite clear when defining-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'll give you the moment. Please have a seat. Thank you.
I have to point-
No, ma'am, this is his call to the audience. We'll add another 15 seconds. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Shall I start again?
Yeah, actually, that would probably be easiest.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. The 2019 and 2023 Arizona election procedures manuals are quite clear when defining the requirements of custody, of chain of custody. The 23 EPM has not changed from 19. Chapter 2, Section I, 7B is not being followed. Quote, "For any election that includes a partisan race, at least two designated ballot retrievers of, at least two differing party preferences shall be assigned to retrieve voted ballots from the ballot drop-off locations or dropbox." The 2019 EPM, Chapter 2, Section I, 1 states that "A ballot drop-off location or dropbox shall be located in a secure location such as inside or in front of federal, state, local, or tribal government buildings." It further goes on to state, Chapter 2, Section I, 1B, "An unstaffed dropbox placed inside a building shall be secured in a manner that will prevent unauthorized removal." The recorder has stated that all of the ballot boxes are staffed. If you look at Example 1, this is not the case. Both janitorial and maintenance staff have complete access to every building. Are there cameras inside the operating 24/7? There is no security. Pima County is the only county in Arizona where the elected recorder will not allow political observers during early voting. Further, there may be some locations with a number and position of poll workers does not meet ARS guidelines. ARS 16542 requires that the Board of Supervisors to approve the poll workers for early voting. Pima Recorder is circumventing this by using some county employees. This is unacceptable. We want to see those poll workers list, and you must follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Fickers.
I'm Sharon Fickers from Pima County. You will have samples of these examples. You should have received them before. Unfortunately, we're not doing it in the order we said. Example 2 is a sample where only one person has, is the courier. There are at least 23 instances of the two-person courier violation in this chain of custody document for the drop-off ballot boxes. Example 3 is a sample of where there are no couriers shown on the form. Both of them are left off the form. Pima County is inconsistent in the chain of custody forms and not following the law. Example 4 shows a delivery of uncounted numbers of pre-printed ballots. There are places where provided for two courier signatures. One Pima County employee, Marion C., supposedly an independent, and the second signature is her family member, Elliot C., a Democrat. Well, what's going on here? These are not opposite parties. Independents are not an opposite. Example 5 shows county employees pretending to be of a different party association. David G. is a registered supervisor. He's listed as a party not determined. Karen is an independent, and these are not opposite parties. Example 6, unstaffed ballot box at Mission Library. There are no staffed signatures in this early vote center. There are 12 violations. There's also an example where only one line for one courier for transfer to the ballot processing center. These are 140 violations to the chain of custody. Pima County is inconsistent. You need to follow the law. Take care of this before our 2024 election. Chain of custody is important to all of us.
Thank you. We have a copy of this, and so I understand that you all have a chore- Yes, we do. I understand you have a choreographed sort of thing. I understand that, and I'm allowing that to happen, but I can't have people coming up and down. Okay? The person that's here-
Immediately turn.
Then the person speaking can turn it. Okay. Kathleen? Thank you.
You have to stand next to the microphone.
I'm looking for Example 7.
7?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're having-
7.
Oh, okay.
7.
Awesome.
Okay.
It has to be here so it can be seen on the screen.
Oh, dear. And just so you all know, this attachment of what you've provided will be at the call. We'll attach it. So everyone will have a copy at some point. Thank you. Go ahead. We'll start. Thanks.
My name is Kathleen Splitsdoser. Okay. Example 7 is a sample of an in-person transfer document. The revision date is 7/18/2022. There is only one line for courier signature. There is no line for the number of express vote envelopes. They just wrote it in. Example 8.
Go ahead, read, read, read.
Revision date is 6/12/20. Shows there is no line for a courier. It is evidence that the election in 2020 was also uncertain and insecure. Example 9 is a sample of a walk-in ballots received on 11/8/22, 2022, a day after early voting ended. This box was delivered by recorder Gabriella Cazares-Kelly to the ballot processing center on 11/15/22. That is one week late. The last day to early vote was 11/7/22. We found examples of multiple ballots being delivered to the ballot processing center after early voting had ended. Why were these ballots delivered after Election Day? Did they count? The most egregious lack of chain of custody are the transfer of ballots between the post office and the county recorder. Example 10. The county provided represents a series of emails going back and forth between the post office and the recorder. Her no-name crew are picking up ballots from the Cherry Bell station. No chain of custody transfer forms exist. This and our research of the voter rolls troubles us. We will speak of this in a bit. You must follow the law. We must have a chain of custody. I am a voter. I work the polls.
Thank you. Melinda Sherwin, followed by Dean Forster, Gail Berry, and Susan Kelly.
Unbeknownst to Sheila, the supervisor at Cherry Bell Post Office, they deliver ballots to vote centers on Election Day. There were no ballot counts or emails between the post office and the recorder's office stating how many ballots were delivered. Recorders, employees, and temporary workers could go to Cherry Bell for all mailing ballots on Election Day. Why then is the post office delivering them? Where is the recorder's crew on the day of election? Where are the chain of custody forms for Election Day? An email exchange with Constance Hargrove acknowledges delivery of the ballots on Election Day by the post office and that it was an agreement between the post office and the There are no, there is no document, however, that mandates or directs the post office to do this. You have no authority to violate the law, none of you.
Thank you. Dean Forster.
Dean Forster, Pima County, since 95. We found county employees or temporary employees that have switched parties from Democrat to either PND or Independent. They did not recognize parties. Data dumps clearly show some of these individuals have switched parties during federal election years and have allowed to work, have been allowed to work in violation of ARS. This is unethical and unlawful. Some of those people were allowed to work at early vote centers where no observers are allowed. The recorder talks about them ensuring the two-party rule is followed. Is the recorder following that practice? We've heard differently from friendly staff. Of the 15 early voting sites, we show 11 sites received uncounted amounts of pre-printed ballots or ballot stock. Where are the remaining four documents? No chain of custody, unknown numbers of voted ballots, unknown number of ballot paper stock going out and returning to recorder with no accountability. Fraudulent signatures, delivery and pickup person signed for two people. Missing seals on mail-in ballots, ballot boxes on chain of custody documents. Further, there are mail-in boxes received that had no seals or the seal was damaged. This is either sloppy or they were tampered with them. Some in this group of speakers have brought data issues to your attention in the past. The recorder uses uncertified, homegrown software for early voting. It's very possible due to the sloppy programming, people who registered inside the 29-day cutoff period were allowed to vote. Example 15 demonstrates the voters who had registered after the 29-day cutoff period voted. Certainly, the outcome of the 23 election could have changed. Example 16 is ARS 16-120.
Gail Berry, followed by Susan Kelly, Shirley Ricard, and Tim Lox.
Good morning. My name is Gail Berry. I'm a relatively new Arizona resident. I live in Pima County. We've spoken about voters who are over the age of 100 on record, and one individual that is 122 years old, Example 17 here. We found over 109,000 registration records without any prior history of voting. Of those, over 65,000 were on the AEVL and have received a ballot with certainty that nobody would respond. What happened to these ballots? Were they inserted during the post office and recorder transfers? Why isn't ARS being followed to remove these voters? The GOP has received numerous calls from voters asking why they cannot find their voter registration record. One voter called in and received a "we have a database glitch" type of answer. We've also been asked why some 10,000 voters were dropped from the voter registration. We, as Americans, have to be able to trust our election system, and we trust that you value it as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Kelly.
Good morning. I'm Susan Kelly out of District 3. As we see it, let's see how many counts of apparent or potential illegalities we've experienced in our elections in 2022. Count 1, chain of custody failures and violations per ARS 16-21E. Count 2, reconciliation procedures, ARS 16-602 and ARS 16-608. Count 3, voters being told they've already voted, ARS 16-411. That goes towards the HAVA Section 301 accuracy rate. Count 4, reduction of 265 precinct locations to mirror 125 vote centers that are more than two miles from people's homes. That is voter suppression, civil rights violations, and 14th Amendment issues. And I was informed this morning that one of our early vote centers that was supposed to be open was not due to some unknown event that happened this morning. So, Count 5, violation of ARS 16-531, recorder list of election board workers not provided to public. Count 6, unlawful curing procedures, ARS 16-550. Count 7, unstaffed drop boxes, ARS 16-1005. We believe Sam Brown and the Pima County Attorney need to investigate and submit a legal opinion on whether or not PND and IND are parties. The language in EPM Chapter 2, Section 1, that states "two differing parties" cannot possibly mean anything but existing recognized parties of Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, and now the Green Party. We are not talking about the intent here. We are talking about the actual words written in the EPM. Please look into election issues.
Shirley Ricard.
Supervisor Christie, Steve, we are directly asking you to request the presence here of the Pima County Recorder and the Elections Director to answer questions surrounding the chain of custody issues, the data issues, and the fact that sample ballots were mailed out in the election date shown is August 30th, as has been said previously. We've not located any Democrats with sample ballots to determine if the Democratic ballots are also showing August 30th of 2024. I think, though, that we have a very, very big problem, don't you? What is the remedy here, sir? We believe many persons have already opened their sample ballots and have seen the incorrect voting date. Do we really believe that a second sample ballot would actually even be opened? It would be immediately thrown into the circle file, in my opinion. There will be those who choose to vote in person who would be disenfranchised because of this date error. This is a ploy designed to confuse the public, no mistake. What about the reports from observers who claim it's far more difficult to witness signature verification? The counter recorder is on record stating that AI signature verification software will not be used, that every ballot that requires verification will be done by a human. This practice had an 80% failure rate in the 2020 and 2022 elections in Maricopa. Is this the reason that observers cannot witness signature verification? Is the genuine two-party rule being used for signature verification? These and many other questions from previous speakers need to be answered, sir. There is very little public trust. We can no longer believe anything that we hear from the county recorder as words are not matching actions. You must follow the law, please. Please, Steve, help us.
Tim Lox, followed by Guisela, Aaron, Gary Vella, Keith Van Heineken, and our last speaker is Tim Smith. So if you wanted to speak, please put in a card.
Good morning. The current recorder has never submitted a list of poll workers, and this board has never approved a list of early vote poll workers, which is a violation of 16-531. I submit that our recorder is knowingly conducting maladministration in connection with the manner in which early voting is being handled. The changing of parties from IND or PND so they can work specific positions is unethical. We need to see what's going on there. We have evidence of multiple workers- We have evidence of multiple workers, multiple workers, not just a couple, who have changed their parties during federal election cycles. We have no idea how much ballot stock was delivered to vote centers, how much ballot stock was used, how many were spoiled. This board has been provided with sample documents contained through a public records request to the county recorder. The documents requested have all been or will be submitted to the clerk in their entirety. There's over 250 pages. Chain of custody process is disgraceful in Pima. All the people of Pima County have been disenfranchised. I provided numbers for past elections. No elections going back to 2016 should have ever been certified. Our trust has been violated, and you have violated your oath. The transparency of our early voting process must become more forefront, considering the upcoming general election. It is your job to ensure election integrity. You have failed miserably. Since you certify elections without any confirmation of accuracy, you are now officially put on notice. Let the record reflect your negligence and our findings of the '22 general election. If you do nothing to correct this, then you are equally as guilty as the county recorder. So as I am so famously known for now, cut the crap, guys.
Good morning. My name is Gisela Aaron. I live in Pima County. We found no chain of custody exists between the post office and the recorder's office. Where are the two-party couriers? This is providing a huge opportunity for ballot stuffing. If they had no chain of custody then, most likely, they did not have any secure chain of custody in 2020. We found four vastly different chain of custody forms. One was dated June 12, 2020. It had no lines for couriers at all. It's in your packet. It casts the '22 election as uncertain and invalid. It also brands the 2020 election as uncertain and invalid. Of the 15 voting centers, early voting centers, 11 sites have received unknown, uncounted amounts of ballot stock or pre-printed ballots without any chain of custody. It is rendering the 2020 election as uncertain and uncertifiable. And if it happens, if this happened in '22, Pima County also did it, did not have a secure ballot or ballot stock in 2020. That's what I say. You have certified uncertain and unreliable election results without any proof to taking the word of a new recorder and new elections director. Get it fixed right away for this election, or you are as guilty as the recorder or election director. Thank you.
Gary Vella?
My comments may be the only ones that are in the election related this morning. My name's Gary Vella. I'm a homeowner in Savano since 2002. I've been involved in animal protection for 35 years now. I'm the current president of SPEAK, Arizona's oldest animal rights group. And SPEAK is an acronym for Supporting and Promoting Ethics for the Animal Kingdom. I'm sure you've seen us in the news addressing issues. This morning, I'm here to set the record straight. At the June 20 meeting last year, President Ed Accerly and Chairman Russell True of the Rito Park Foundation addressed the board. Only 22 seconds into his comments, Accerly was already misrepresenting the facts to the BOS with statements such as "we report zero fatalities in 2023" and, quote, "there were no horse racetrack breakdowns in 2023," unquote, meaning on-the-track breakdowns. We are, you know, we are fully focused on the horse racing issue here, as we were the dog racing issue before Arizona finally outlawed that. Accerly's statement is not in sync with the 2023 data from the Arizona Gaming Department's Racing Division, which I assume you all have a copy of. I dropped them off a couple of weeks ago. It clearly shows that there were two pretty much black and white fatalities on that Rito, Iron Soul and Wind You Don't Know. Master Ruler came down sick after a race here at the local track, and they had to euthanize him a week later when he was up at Turf Paradise. So there's been a lot of misrepresentation, including the track manager, that told KVOA and the Arizona Daily Star that there were no fatalities in 2019 and 2020. That's not true, and we can provide documentation of that as well. So please keep that in mind when you deal with these people in the future.
Thank you.
By the way, I'd like to know what the current status is about any contract renewal too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any contract renewals will be coming to the public. So Keith Van Heineken, followed by Dave Smith.
Hello, my name is Keith Van Heineken. I've been coming to these meetings in this room for over 20 years. And I'd like to say, good morning, Rio Nuevo 2.0, otherwise known as Mosaic Quarter. Now, I tell you what, go away and shut up for, say, a tenth of a percent of this. That's my cut. I go away, you never have to hear from me again. That's about $2 million. What do you think, Jim? Think I can squeeze out these Democrats? Now, I'd like to say, baby killing, whether it's Zygot's fetuses, bitch or child, $65 million over the generations. Legacy cost is 150 million citizens that do not exist. Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid are cascading failures. That owes up because of LBJ. He's destroyed my family. I saw it for 10 years when I lived in Chicago working construction. The open borders kill America movement led by fascist Democrats. That's 35 million. That's biblical. The question, why are all assassins Democrats? HPH is the Democrat modus operandi for decades, and this is what it got us. Look at your failures. I have this too long to count. Welcome to your third world.
Dave Smith. If anyone else wishes to put in a speaker card, please do.
Everyone's bringing books today, right? I tell you what, this is great. You know, I don't just come to you as the chairman of the Republican Party here in Pima County. I come to you as a law enforcement writer and specialist. I'm currently working on an article ironically about political violence when Saturday went down. And I just want to share with you some of the issues here. What you're hearing here in this room today is an organized complaint to you regarding a critical element to eliminate the potential of political violence in our society. You know, Dr. Lee has expressed concern, and this is an important thing for us to think about as a law enforcement expert. I'm concerned about, number one, you saw Saturday, what was probably a lone wolf. They're really hard to stop, okay? And that's the kind of thing where we're worried about that in law enforcement. This is why we're still trying to work up profiles and that. But when you talk about organized political violence, the key element is frustration. It's not poverty, it's not all the other things that we might think, it's frustration. And America, you will find, when you study this, has always been able to sort of avoid political violence when there was considered an option that I have an election, the process, the Civil War. You can literally trace back to the point where the South no longer felt it had redress or ability to change the conditions of what it had because they'd lost their election and Lincoln had won, and boom, they just separated, right? And it was a critical frustration moment. America, every month we come in here, every couple of weeks, and we talk to you about our frustrations. But we all had the hope that every two years and four years, whatever, we can change the House of Representatives at the national level, which is a form of revolution, and we get to change you as the Board of Supervisors. But when we don't have faith in the election, see, the crisis becomes now the frustration level, and you're hearing it today. We have lost faith in the election process, and nobody seems to be building up or helping us eliminate that tension. Understand this, it's a pressure cooker. The way you eliminate the pressure is a release valve, and elections are the release valve. Please find out what's going on. Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. Okay. With that, if there are no other speakers, I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public and ask my colleagues if they wish to ask staff to review a matter, wish to ask that a matter be put on a future agenda, or respond to a criticism.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie?
It's obvious there are some deep, deep and serious problems with the electoral process we are experiencing and have experienced right now. We heard very eloquently a number of issues that need to be examined, they need to be addressed, and they need to be answered to. I am requesting at the next board meeting that this whole topic be placed on the agenda and that the tape of the speakers be looked at and recorded so that all of the questions raised, all of the issues raised, all of the concerns raised are addressed in that agenda item at the next August meeting. And I would also request that the recorder be present and that the Department of Elections Director be present and that they be allowed to answer these questions either in the order that they were asked at Call to the Public or under their own listing. But it's essential that we get to the bottom of this. We have, unfortunately, it'll be too late.
You've asked for the item to be put on the agenda, that's the only thing that we can do at this point, or respond to a criticism? I believe you've done it.
The issue, again, needs to be addressed, and so that's what I'm requesting. I have a second item.
Go ahead.
The gentleman talking about the memorial plaza for our servicemen and for the Korean Plaza Memorial. I would like an explanation of the situation, who owns what, who's responsible for what, and if we find out who is responsible for what, why isn't it being maintained in a proper and effective way that it deserves? So if we could have a report from the entity or entities that are responsible in the county to maintain those spots, I would like that issue brought up at the next meeting as well.
Thank you. Any Supervisor Lee or Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Lee?
Thank you, Chair Grabah. I would also like us to ask Administrator Lesher to look into a memorial that really, because if it's in that area that I think the gentleman's referring to, nobody sees it. It's remote, and it would be really wonderful if we could find a place that really is visible and even look at, I don't know, but maybe having a Vietnam with the Korean, with World War II, you know, something that we can all be proud of and see and celebrate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna, we have executive session on the addendum 2, and so I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session for addendum items number 2 and 3.
So moved.
I'll second. So a motion from Supervisor Scott, and I second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to executive session, and we'll be back as soon as we're done. We'll be back as soon as we're done.
Okay, we're back in session. I see Supervisor Heinz is joining us remotely. We, so item number two for executive session was information only and item number three was an item that Supervisor Heinz requested and so since you weren't in executive session, we can postpone that to, I mean, we can push it off to the next meeting or we can address it at the end of this meeting. Which would you prefer?
We can just put it on executive session, fine.
You want to put it on for the next meeting or do you want to do it at the end of this one? Okay. All right, so we'll just, so that item we'll bring back for August first. Yeah, if I, if I can go ahead and move, what's, what's our first one? August 13th to continue executive session number three to August 13th.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. So we have a few, we're going to move a couple things around so, because we have some people here that, I don't know why you don't want to hang out and stay for, till, you know, we're done, but, so we have, item number 34 is a town of Oro Valley to provide Motorola Flex Spillman Shared Agency, IGA. I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. And then we're going to, so we have other guests here for the WIB presentation, which is the item number eight. We have people here for the Mosaic presentation, which is 28 through 31. And then we have Job Path, which is item number 16. I think, I think we can go to that really quickly because it's really just approval of the actual contract, right? We made all of the other changes and then we do have a redlined version, which is what I'd asked for, for this item. So I'll go ahead and move item number 16.
Second.
Promotion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Chergarhova.
Supervisor Scott.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Lesher, and I don't need a response to this right away, but if you could follow up with the board. I very much appreciated the joint letter that was written by Director Sullivan and Dr. Greif and commend both of you, not only for the collaborative efforts that resulted in that letter to the board, but also the work that you're going to be doing together moving forward. But I just wanted to get some updates to the board as they are available on some of the items that were discussed in that joint letter. First of all, the three participant categories that are noted as the focus of the new contract and, and the benefits to those young people who are in those participant categories. Very intrigued by the support service policy to avoid duplication of services that you're going to be working on. Would like to get updates on that as they're available. And then the monthly meetings that are described in the joint letter and the topics that are going to be addressed, just as the county administrator feels that there's sufficient information to update the board, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Five oh, thank you. And now we're going to go to the WIB presentation, that's item number eight. It's a workforce investment board. And who is joining us? Oh, we'll wait on that one. Thank you.
Chergarhova, while they're coming up, just because I put this item on, could I just say why I put it on?
Sure.
As, as we saw in a memo to the board dated March 11th from Ms. Lesher, Pima County's local plan for workforce development has to be updated every four years. And that means that the plan that is in the process of being updated right now is going to be the first new plan since four of the five of us were seated on this day. It's only Supervisor Christie was here the last time the local plan was updated. And I heard by way of the president and CEO of the Tucson Metro Chamber, who's also a workforce investment board member, that workforce investment board members had been involved in some strategic planning efforts. And Mr. Director Sullivan, in his memo of March 8th that is attached to Ms. Lesher's memo of March 11th, made reference to those strategic planning task forces as part of the goals and strategies for the local plan development. So that's why I wanted to hear about the strategic planning that's being done by our workforce investment board members. Also asked not only that Director Sullivan be present, but that Director Vaskovi Kiori be present because just last year, we revised, we approved a revised economic development strategic plan. And I really would like to know how the workforce development local plan is aligning with the efforts of the economic development strategic plan. So just wanted to offer those introductory remarks and I appreciate it. Chergarhova.
Madam Chair, very quickly.
Supervisor Christie.
Do you foresee any kind of action taken on this or just for our information only? Thank you.
It's information. And so we have our current and former chairs. Is that correct? Okay.
Current, former.
Right, right. So tag team however you want. We have, we are going to get, go ahead and give you a little timer so it kind of helps sort of get you all kind of set up and then we have some time at the end for question answers. So the floor is yours.
Well, good morning and thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dr. Mark Vitale. I've been the chair
Okay, we're back in session. I see Supervisor Heinz is joining us remotely. So, item number two for executive session was information only. And item number three was an item that Supervisor Heinz requested. And so, since you weren't in executive session, we can postpone that to, I mean, we can push it off to the next meeting, or we can address it at the end of this meeting. Which would you prefer?
We can just put it on executive session, it's fine.
You want to put it on for the next meeting? Or do you want to do it at the end of this one? Okay. All right, so we'll just, so that item will bring back for August first. Yeah, if I can go ahead and move, what's our first one? August 13th to continue executive session number three to August 13th.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes unanimously. So we have a few, we're going to move a couple things around, so, because we have some people here that, I don't know why you don't want to hang out and stay for, until, you know, we're done, but, so we have, item number 34 is a Town of Oro Valley to provide Motorola Flex Spillman Shared Agency, IGA. I'll go ahead and move that item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes unanimously. And then, we're gonna, so we have other guests here for the WIB presentation, which is item number eight. We have people here for the Mosaic presentation, which is 28 through 31. And then, we have Job Path, which is item number 16. I think, I think we can go to that really quickly, because it's really just approval of the actual contract, right? We made all of the other changes. And then, we do have a redlined version, which is what I'd asked for, for this item. So I'll go ahead and move item number 16.
Second.
A motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion?
Chirgur Halva.
Supervisor Scott.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Lesher, and I don't need a response to this right away, but if you could follow up with the board. I very much appreciated the joint letter that was written by Director Sullivan and Dr. Greif, and commend both of you, not only for the collaborative efforts that resulted in that letter to the board, but also the work that you're going to be doing together moving forward. But I just wanted to get some updates to the board as they are available on some of the items that were discussed in that joint letter. First of all, the three participant categories that are noted as the focus of the new contract and, and the benefits to those young people who are in those participant categories. Very intrigued by the support service policy to avoid duplication of services that you're going to be working on. Would like to get updates on that as they're available. And then, the monthly meetings that are described in the joint letter and the topics that are going to be addressed, just as the county administrator feels that there's sufficient information to update the board, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item passes unanimously. Five oh. Thank you. And now, we're going to go to the WIB presentation, that's item number eight. It's a Workforce Investment Board. And, who is joining us? Oh, we'll wait on that one. Thank you.
Chirgur Halva, while they're coming up, just because I put this item on, could I just say why I put it on?
Sure.
As, as we saw in a memo to the board dated March 11th from Ms. Lesher, Pima County's local plan for workforce development has to be updated every four years. And that means that the plan that is in the process of being updated right now is going to be the first new plan since four of the five of us were seated on this day. It's only Supervisor Christie was here the last time the local plan was updated. And I heard by way of the President and CEO of the Tucson Metro Chamber, who's also a Workforce Investment Board member, that Workforce Investment Board members had been involved in some strategic planning efforts. And Mr. Director Sullivan, in his memo of March 8th that is attached to Ms. Lesher's memo of March 11th, made reference to those strategic planning task forces as part of the goals and strategies for the local plan development. So, that's why I wanted to hear about the strategic planning that's being done by our Workforce Investment Board members. Also asked, not only that Director Sullivan be present, but that Director Viskovy Kiori be present, because just last year, we revised, we approved a revised Economic Development Strategic Plan. And I really would like to know how the Workforce Development Local Plan is aligning with the efforts of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So just wanted to offer those introductory remarks, and I appreciate it, Chirgur Halva.
Madam Chair, very quickly.
Supervisor Christie.
Do you foresee any kind of action taken on this, or just for our information only? Thank you.
It's information, and so, we have our current and former chairs. Is that correct? Okay.
Current, former.
Right, right. So, tag team however you want. We have, we are going to go ahead and give you a little timer, so it kind of helps sort of get you all kind of set up, and then we have some time at the end for question answers. So, the floor is yours.
Please. Well, good morning and thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dr. Mark Vitale. I've been the chair up until June 30th for the past four years of the Workforce Investment Board, and I've served on it for nine. And my colleague, Eric Mears, has been on it for, what, like 11, 12? He was a prior chair preceding me, and he's back for the second half of that now.
Voluntold.
Voluntold, yeah, that, that was, that's pretty much how that happens. As Supervisor Scott mentioned, the Workforce Investment Board can be up to 45 members, currently sits at 35, and every single one of them is a volunteer. The, the purpose of the board is to govern the utilization of Workforce Investment Opportunity Act dollars, which flow from the Department of Labor into local communities through the states. And there's a whole host of requirements and calibration types of efforts, down to the composition of the board that have to be maintained in order to stay in good standing. And the state of Arizona is very, very good about staying in, in alignment with the federal statutes. I, I work in higher education. I've been with the University of Phoenix for 23 years now. And I have to say that the state gives higher education a run for its money in the amount of regulation that it does in, in this particular area. So, for Pima County, the allocations of workforce investment dollars are updated every year. Three years ago was just under 10 million, two years ago with a reduction in federal dollars going out into communities, we, we did decline down to 7.8. And it looks like from the memo that was just released, it's down to 7.4 this year. So that is certainly something that, that the board has to take into effect. And by that, I mean the Workforce Investment Board, but as well as the, the Pima County Board of Supervisors. You all are connected directly to it, because Pima County is established as the Title I and B, i.e. the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act Administrator. Administrator Lesher is considered kind of at the pinnacle of that, and Chair Grijalva is listed in the shared governments agreement as the local CEO. That's one model. The other model that you might find out there for workforce investment is that there's an actual standalone nonprofit that is established as the administrator of the funds, and then their board governs that. And that's more common out east. In Arizona, we only have one community that is organized that way, and that is Yuma. And the organization Yuma Private Industry Council is the entity that administers the WIOA funds. The county out there actually doesn't do that directly, but they are, of course, partners. Because the second major goal of a Workforce Investment Board is to create networks, alliances, and pathways for stakeholders within a community to come together to develop the type of infrastructure necessary to support workforce career development, both in the short term and in the long term. So that takes, that manifests in several different ways. And obviously, with the time we have, we're not going to go through the deck, either the original or the expanded one that you have. But the strategic planning that took place was designed to take a look at the federal law, to, to review what the boards are responsible for. And there's a wide scope. And then, develop shorter, short-form, small task forces around those strategic areas of focus. And those ranged everything from looking at some underserved populations that required more attention than historically the board had been focusing on, to capitalizing on current trends in workforce development, the, the most prominent one being that of the introduction and proliferation of registered apprenticeships, which are work and study on-the-job experiences where candidates go through, receive training and on-the-job experience, and then exit from that program completely debt-free. So, especially overseas, England, big proponent of that, it's beginning to, to gain some momentum here in the states. So, a lot of different moving pieces. The, the strategic planning process that the Workforce Board went under, as Supervisor Scott was mentioning, we are on a four-year cycle required by the Department of Labor, so required by the state of Arizona. And then, on the two-year cycles, we, we do updates to the original plan. So, originally, there was a plan due July 24. The state did push that back for a variety of reasons. It's now due January of '25. So this is a great time to begin this conversation. The board itself organized into, it was nine different task forces, eight of which provided thought leadership, mission, vision, objectives, KPIs, measurable KPIs, on an annual basis for the next four years. And that's the, the process that we went through starting in September of last year. The teams did continue to meet. Some teams had community members outside of the, the board itself, but all teams had board members represented on those areas. They did research, they met with community experts, and then they presented to the, the Workforce Board in May and June, May and June, the, really the mission, vision, KPIs, and objectives. So the next step is, of course, to involve this board, make sure that there is alignment with not just the Pima County economic engine, but also all of the other economic engines that exist within our footprint. And the way we do that is either through attendance or actual representation on the board. We have the City of Tucson, Sarita, both have board seats. Heath?
Chambers.
Chambers, yeah, the chambers are there. Heath used to be on the board until he actually took a job at Pima County in his current role. And Pima County employees cannot sit on the board for obvious reasons of conflict of interest. Sun Corridor is involved with the Workforce Board. So, in your expanded deck, you see on one of the slides, the workforce sectors that we focus on, it was recommended we don't change those. And then, I overlaid how that aligns with the different entities that also pursue economic development, including Pima County. They're all very, very well-aligned. So, the next step is to take that thought leadership, that research, those objectives, and, and begin to expand and enrich and formulate it as a written narrative to submit into the template with the schedule that new Chair Mears gets to manage through, lead through. We're looking at a September, October period to allow for public commentary, revisions, and submission to the state.
Thanks.
And that was our time, so, sorry.
Did you, did you want to add anything, sir?
No, I mean, I, I think what I would add is that, I think, I've heard that a number of you aren't familiar with the WIB, kind of new to this. I've been a volunteer. I'm a father, I'm a husband, I'm a, I'm a business leader in this town for over 25-plus years, and I'm a consummate volunteer in this particular role, recognize that the WIB, when we talk about them, these are volunteers that cross our community that have some chosen calling to be a part of the overall economic development. So, that does not mean that we are experts in all these fields. So, working collaborative with CWD and other community and economic development programs and people, these, we need to also learn from you. So we need to be finding a way to make sure that we are collaborative. This is not a single-minded leadership role. This is a community-oriented give-back, as well as, you know, focus on what our roles and responsibilities are with governance. So, I think it's really important to make sure that we have that partnership, not only with you, but also with the remaining other parts of the community. We are but a small piece of the nexus of economic development in this community. We're, as we mentioned, 7.4 million dollars. That's not a lot of money, but can we put those in places where we can lift people up from poverty into prosperity? So we have to make sure that we're, we're driving through that mission, and how we're doing that is, is part of our overall governance. And I'm looking forward to working with you through this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions?
Chirgur Halva.
Supervisor Scott.
Got three questions. One for our chairs, one for Director Sullivan, one for Director Viskovy Kiori. For our chairs, the expanded slide deck that you sent us, and it's attached to the item, lists nine areas for your strategic planning efforts. How were those areas determined by the, by the members of the board? And then, we also have the names of the different board members who are assigned to each area.
Please. So the specific content areas were designed as an alignment with the federal regulations that dictates what Workforce Boards are, are responsible for. It also was a result of conversations among board members in areas of interest and opportunity. The board members themselves self-selected based on their own interests. So we, we did a Survey Monkey, and they were allowed to pick their top three choices. And then, they were assigned one of those three based on who was picking what and what levels of expertise they might bring to that particular area.
And then, that'll all be completely fleshed out, you said, by September?
Yeah, so, the next part is going to be, how to workshop that is going to be Chair Mears's decision, either a dedicated task force, or historically, we've also utilized our planning committee, one of our, our four standing committees, to develop that in, in conjunction with resources from the community workforce development staff who assist and support in, in that narrative.
Yeah, I'd like to add something here. This workforce task force program, which I was part of one, so you see my name on one of those items, right? This was a preparatory, how do we get the WIB engaged and have a system in which we can bring in and look at those particular areas? So we're getting early voice around these task force teams to put in as consideration. So, the presentation you have is not a solidified presentation for you to approve on, right? It's a work content that leads into the next two to three months worth of work activities that would be done by the WIB, the planning committee, et cetera, and then following and supporting with our, our CWD and other partners to put that into the framework.
Well, your response then really nicely sets the stage for my question to Director Sullivan. Director Sullivan, Ms. Lesher made reference to your March 8th memo when she sent the memo that's attached to this item. And in that March 8th memo, you lay out a timeline for the local plan development. And initially, the plan was to give the county administrator the plan to review by June. Obviously, that has passed. And then, move into a local plan draft, public comment solicitation in July. So, what I would like to request is that the board get an updated timeline, because obviously, the March timeline is outdated. And I'd like to know when we get that updated timeline, and feel free to comment on this today as well, but I'd like to know in more detail in a, in a memo, how are the strategic planning task forces and, and their work going to be incorporated into the local plan? So I'm asking for some follow-up, but anything you want to say today, happy to hear it.
Chair Grijalva, Supervisor Scott, that also struck me last night, that we need to update the, the timeline, given the delay from the state and, and other factors that have pushed it back. So, happy to provide that, and also provide additional details of the partnership, all the, all the folks that we're going to be working with to develop the plan. So, you know, it is the WIB, and the WIB is, is a, a very good representation of our community. But, you know, we're also going to be seeking input from everybody who does workforce development, our customers, new partners like Job Path. So, very good point, we'll update that and, and provide additional context.
And, and when you update that, could you also give us some more detail on some of the areas where the WIB supports the Board of Supervisors? That is in your most recent memo. It's in that paragraph that says, "In general, the WIB supports the Board of Supervisors by developing the local workforce development plan." And then, there's a whole list of other areas where they are supposed to support the board. But, you know, speaking just for myself, having been here three and a half years, I'm not familiar with a lot of those supports that we're supposed to be getting from the, the board. Hence, one, another reason for scheduling this presentation. So if you can get us some more detail on, on the contents of that paragraph, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Chair Grijalva, Supervisor Scott, absolutely. And it's a, a lot that goes into it, so, that is collaborative. For example, the recertification of the one-stop centers, you know, is done by volunteers. So, it, it's a good opportunity not only to show all the work that the WIB does, but all the time that they're putting into, into their volunteering on the WIB. And, I'd just like to finish that with, you know, thank you to the former chair, incoming chair, for, for their time and, and everything they're going to do to volunteer all the time that we're going to be spending together and have spent together.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just really quick add on? I personally find it very helpful to do like little presentations or have meetings. And I know that putting together these memos are incredibly time-consuming too, so if, if there's a lot of detail and nuance, I just personally appreciate like just setting up a meeting and chit-chatting, because I do think that that, that is an opportunity for me to clarify things if it's a question mark, so. I think it's very helpful. And if, and if it makes more sense for you to come to do a public presentation, it sometimes takes less time to put together presentations. Some of those memos are very detailed, so.
I am happy to revise my request, because I think you, I think you make an excellent point, that it gives board then opportunity to engage with, with staff in the moment. So, thank you for saying that.
May I add one comment?
Please.
The Workforce Investment Board meetings are public meetings, open meetings that are scheduled. And, and as we continue to transition from Mark's four years of great service, and then as I move into this for the next two years, I invite you to be a part of that if your time allows. Getting to know us, we will be working towards being more of hybrid. We've been very virtual for a while, for, for good reasons. But, what I find in these WIB meetings is that you have all these community partners, volunteers, business people, that before the meeting and after the meeting, there's relationships that are being built, that are all focused on how to make this community better. So I would just ask that if you're wanting to be more, you're invited, obviously. That happens if your time allows, and I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing you. It also may inspire the volunteers, that the work that they're doing is also recognized.
And I know that sometimes we have different supervisors that jump in. So if you want to ask us, as long as there's only two of us, it doesn't become another meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And I, and I think that that's the safest way, because I bump, like jumped into meetings periodically, and I see that, you know, I have a colleague or two on, and so I'll jump off, because I.
Those are, those are rules. I run a business.
Yeah.
Those are rules that you guys have. I don't have those constraints in learning a good business, so.
But.
Yep, got to avoid the form, so.
Yeah, but I, I think that that's a great idea.
Be a part of our community as well, and that way, you can also see how you can learn and be a part of, of what we're doing for the community.
Perfect.
So I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
My, yeah, my own, thank you, Chirgur Halva. My only other question was to Director Viskovy Kiori, because I know that you're going to be sharing with us the annual update on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, so I don't want to steal any thunder from that presentation that I know you've been working on with Mr. DeBonus, but I just would like you to comment in general on how you see the work of this local plan for workforce development aligning with the revised Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Yeah, of course. Chair, Vice Chair, Board, thank you for the question. So I think in a couple of very specific but important ways. I think, number one, you'll see for the strategic vision with the WIB, the industry alignment is perfectly aligned. All of those industries are our industries, and we work on those industries in different ways, right? They're working to train those individuals to take the jobs that we're attracting and expanding within the community. So that's that perfect alignment right there. I think the other thing to take note of is the methodology that they employed to go through the strategic planning process was actually very similar to ours. The thematic elements, the partnership, the collaboration, workforce development as a central theme, it's a component, a direct component of our Economic Development Strategic Plan. So all of those alignments are there, and they exist. And I think lastly, what I would point out is our direct connection to community and workforce development. We both refer to one another and include each other on all of these different projects that we're working on. So when we're attracting or expanding, Dan and Rhonda are my first calls to ensure that we have the workforce development capacity needs, or the ability to pivot and create trainings for those individuals that are looking at our communities. So, overall, among the three entities, there's a perfect alignment, collaboration, and communication that makes us very effective.
Thank you very much. And Chirgur Halva, thank you for your suggestion that presentations might be better than, than memoranda. I'm fine with that. I just think the board needs more information on the, the work of the WIB, and this is an especially. information on the work of the WIB. And this is an especially pivotal time to get that additional information because of this thing that happens only every four years, and because it comes on the heels of the revisions to the Economic Development Strategic Plan. I just see all of these things falling in place together. We also had a discussion when we approved the Sun Corridor contract about the division of labor, if you will, between Sun Corridor and the Economic Development Department. That's another matter that comes to mind when we're talking about these global issues. So I appreciate you scheduling the presentation and appreciate my colleagues taking on, letting me ask all these questions.
Just very quickly, because we're going to move on. Do you need to say something?
Just a real quick comment to complement what Supervisor Scott was saying is, once we're through the strategic planning process in January, the engagement between the Board of Supervisors and the Workforce Investment Board should continue, because we immediately roll into 2025 certification of the local areas. And that is a tremendously extensive process, where every tiny aspect of what goes on in workforce development, both administratively and strategically, is reviewed, investigated, and evaluated. So it continues to be a great opportunity to stay engaged and be aware of what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for being here. I really appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go on to the mosaic. It's items number 28 through 31. We have a presentation, and then hopefully, as part of that presentation, it'll explain why we have so many items for this. Administrator Lesher.
Sure. Chair Gravva, members of the board, your presentation today is Mr. DeBonus, I think, as he walks through. We know that there's been a variety of documents that came out quite recently, but when you, just a reminder, when you approved the initial documents in March, or the initial agreement in March, we said we would be coming back with some of the next steps in financing and such. And so Mr. Debonus has been leading a team from the county who's been working with Frank Knott, who's also here, and we'll walk through very quickly what those documents are, and then happy to have Mr. Knott add any additional information. So, thank you, Carmen.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time today on these items. As the county administrator indicated, we were in front of the board in March. We had brought the lease documents for the Mosaic Quarter project forward, and the board approved those. The next step following board approval was for financing to be put in place in order for the loan to be funded and construction permits to be issued and the construction of the project Phase 1 to begin. So we've been working, as Ms. Lesher indicated, with Mr. Knott and with his team, along with our county finance department, our county attorney's office, the county's financial advisor, as well as outside legal counsel, reviewing the documents that are in front of you today, as well as associated documents that will be signed upon closing of the loan. So in front of you today are amendments to the master ground lease, the Phase 1 lease, the Phase 1 sublease, and also the development agreement. So the development agreement really set forth the overarching relationship between the county and Mosaic Quarter Development. That has not been updated since the board originally approved it back in 2022. So these are conforming changes, I would say, to move us through to the point where financing can be closed and the construction can start. I will reference the memorandum from the county administrator, July 11, that summarizes the key points that were updated in the documents. And really, the leases themselves have a couple of key components. There was an additional 3.39 acres of land that was added into the Phase 1 area, and that includes things that were necessary to address abandonment of easements and locating of the improvements, the final improvements on the site. It was really conforming the approved plans with the lease documents. And the overall result of that is that the annual lease payment has increased. So it originally, what previously was $565,500,000, and that has gone up to $587,640,000. The overall financing for the project, as we have been finalizing the details, and Mr. Knott can speak specifically to this if the board has any additional questions, but has increased from $411 million to $425 million. And included in there is the breakdown of additional $6.3 million in debt service reserve, an increase in the construction period interest of $6.6 million, and then additional financing charges of just over $1 million. The documents on the lease side also include a clarification of what the final form of the agreement is that will manage the flow of all the documents. So as you know, there are multiple leases. Dollars come in and out of those leases and go to different uses, which include the operational expenses of the facility. It includes debt service payment, property, tax payment, rent payments, the split of the net cash flow between the county and Mosaic Quarter. So that will take the form of a cash management agreement with a bank institution. It was previously referenced as a securitization trustee in the leases. And then there also is, in the Phase 1 lease, a contingent extension lease term for that, that would allow for two additional 10-year time periods in the rare event that there is a default or the lender forecloses on the lien. So basically, it would allow for operations of the facility to continue for an additional period of time to allow for it to become cash solvent and to meet the obligations of the leases from a financial standpoint. All of that also has then a series of updates to the exhibits and the schedules associated with the leases. I would describe this as being largely conforming the structure of the leases with the final documents necessary for closing on the loan. Included in the changes that are in front of the board today is a requirement that the loan closes within 20 business days of the board's action, or of the effective date of the leases, which would be today if the board approves those. The Development Agreement Amendment updates the date for substantial completion and final completion for the anchor elements at Phase 1, and that moves them to July 31, 2025, as well as, excuse me, May 31, 2025 for substantial completion, and then final completion to July 31 of 2025. And updates to the timeframes for the starting of the committees that are associated with the project, most notably the Development Committee. Obviously, that won't begin until development occurs. So within 15 days of the effective date of these changes, that committee would be initiated, as well as then the Community Engagement Committee would launch within 30 days of the effective date. So those are the key changes that are included in the leases here today in front of you. As noted, Mr. Knott is here and can assist with answering any questions you may have, as can I.
Questions? Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Scott.
For some reason, and maybe I'm not seeing the whole issue here, but it seems like the horse is being put before the cart. You're asking, at this particular point, to approve very intense details of financing, that in my experience with dealing any kind of property closures or loan documents, or any kind of lease arrangements, that those things were worked out before we went ahead and approved the whole plan. We approved the whole plan, and it, I think, could have been assumed that what you just outlined was already in the plan and approved and worked out at the original time that we approved this plan, which was in March. Now, it was approved in March, we're having all these amendments, what, five months later? It's a little concerning that, what if one of these items that you are giving the renditions to today, what if something went haywire at some point, but we've already approved the plan? It seems like we're doing it, pardon the saying, bass ackwards. These things, couldn't they have been approved, or looked at, or brought forth at the same time the agreement was? I'm concerned about some kind of a glitch going wrong with the financing after the fact that we approved the program. If we approved the program, and then the financing doesn't go through with these amendments, what happens to the whole program?
B, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for a motion, a second for a discussion. So I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Okay, motion is second by Supervisor Christie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this is just to discuss. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisor Christie. So the leases that were presented to the board in March contemplated that the financing would close following approval of the leases.
May I very quickly just interject something for more clarity? In my former life as a car dealer, if I said to somebody, "Hey, we're going to lease you a car. Let's agree to that."
Yep.
"We're going to do it." And then we get into the financing, and something goes haywire, either with the credit rating, or the interest rate, or the payment, or something. What happened? Why would we say, "Okay, let's lease you a car," without checking those items first?
Understood, Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie. So directly to that question, the lease includes a provision that if financing is not completed, the county has the right to terminate the leases. So that's the direct answer to that question. The concept for how the financing was structured has been known and agreed upon between the county and not development, even prior to the board approving the leases initially in March. So as.
We are talking about $1 billion with the B, right?
So Supervisor Christie, Madam Chair, we're talking about $425 million financing for Phase 1 of the project.
Okay. So tell me again, why we're not putting the horse before the cart?
So Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, I would say that these are working in tandem, and they're closely aligned. And so the financing structure was known by the county, and the county has been working directly with Mosaic Quarter Development in finalizing both the revisions to the lease document, as well as the financing documents that will enable the loan to be closed. So we are confident in having worked over the last several months that the financing will close within the time period that is now included in the amended leases, which is that 20 business days. We are that close with the finalization of the documents to be executed for the lease to close. And I would just offer that this is working as it was designed to work. It may come as a bit of a question, as you've raised, as to the sequencing of it. But we've been doing exactly what we had indicated upon presenting the leases to the board in March, and then moving to get to finalization and closing of financing, so construction can begin.
Just a moment. Administrator Lesher, did you want to jump in?
Chair Gravva, I just wanted, Mr. Knott is here from Mosaic Quarter, and I think he might want to.
Did you want to add any information?
Anything to that discussion?
Before he does, could I direct a couple of other questions?
Sure. Well, he can answer that question.
Whoever wants to answer. One of the foundational elements of the whole program, and my understanding is that one of the anchors of the program was going to be the University of Arizona in its ice plex and its hockey. What are we charging the University of Arizona to have that naming right and that ability to have it presented as theirs?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Knott to speak to you about the relationship with the University of Arizona.
Thank you, Chair Gravva, members of the board, and Supervisor Christie. I appreciate the private sector experience you referenced from when you were back as a car dealer. And I think the analogy I would use, the statement I would say is, "But for these changes to the leases, which are the result of finishing the financing, the financing is ready to go." And so the analogy I would use is, in your example of a car lease, is when you start to cut the deal with the dealer, you start going through the lease contract, there may be some changes that you need in terms of, you know, finance, warranties, and the contract still isn't done. It's pending some changes that might affect that contract and be additive to it before you actually sign. And that's the situation we have here. When we had the leases approved in March, there were some extra changes that came about that we realized were necessary to those documents as a result of finalizing the $425 million in financing.
These were just freshly found out at that time.
No, I think as you go through and you structure a complicated $425 million financing, you do, as you go through leases, you start to see, and other documents, and you start to see where some extra coverage might be needed in order to backstop the loan.
And you didn't see them before, when the original lease came out?
No, I think we saw everything that was apparent at the time. And as you go through this process, you do discover things, or a request is made to make some changes that accommodate a lender, where you have to understand what you're dealing with, then how it impacts the existing documents, and then move to see what changes you can make and seek approval of those changes.
And Madam Chair, but theoretically, any one of those changes that you discovered during this process could have blown up the whole deal.
I'm not sure it would have blown up the deal, because at any time, when you say blow up the deal, are you referring to the county's liability on it?
Yeah, whatever it takes for the project to move forward.
I'm not sure that there's anything that would have blown up the deal, but it would have made the financing a little more difficult. And things, as interest rates change, as the credit markets change on a daily and a weekly basis, you're going to have changes to a lease document like this that need to be made. And to answer your question about the University of Arizona, the university does not have naming rights to the ice plex, nor any other building on site.
Do they have any financial?
They're a tenant at the ice plex, and it is through campus recreation. It's not through the university's budget. I think it's important to note that for the club teams, which this is, it's not a part of NCAA athletics, those players, both the men and the women, actually pay dues that go towards the fees the university is paying us. And then there's also the ticket revenue, the merchandise revenue, for which we have agreements in place with the university. So it's not coming out of the university budget. It's actually coming out of their use of the site, and their players coming out of their pockets to promote their teams.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Knott, you obviously are aware that right now, the University of Arizona is not in the most prime financial condition. But you're saying this isn't coming from the university. This is a club-type of situation, that the club teams are participating financially in the usage of the facility?
So the contract itself is from the university through its Department of Campus Recreation. The funds the campus recreation uses to pay their portion of the lease are not derived from appropriations from the state legislature, nor are they derived from tuition dollars coming in from students. They are derived from a mix of dues that the men and women club team players pay, and also the revenues from sponsorships, jersey sales, merchandise sales, ticket sales, that the campus rec will generate from the use of the building.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Knott, what do you estimate that revenue to be?
I can't tell you what their revenue is. I can tell you what.
The revenue to?
Correct.
The project.
Yes. It started, the base level is around $750,000 a year.
And Supervisor Scott had a question. Can we go to him, and then, okay, great. Supervisor Scott?
I've got a few questions, so I don't know.
Do you want to direct him to who?
I wanted to finish.
Okay.
Can I just have one?
Go ahead.
We hear, Mr. Knott, that there's, and believe it, you know, I'm trying to look at this as positively as I can, but it's a lot of money, and there's a lot on the line, I think. And I think there's a lot of issues with the whole location, the timing, the involvement of the county rather than the private sector. Those, I don't need to go into at this point, because it's down the road quite a ways. But we hear talk about an economic recession, or a stock market crash, or a worst-case scenario financially. If that were to happen, and there's a lot of leading indicators that say we could very well go through something like that, a lot of. well go through something like that, a lot of experts are saying that there are some potential downturns in the economy that could be quite severe. In the worst-case scenario, what would the Pima County taxpayers be on the line, on the hook for if this whole thing went south?
So, Chair Gherhava, members of the board, Supervisor Christie, I'm glad you asked me that question because it is vital in terms of this analysis. When I was here on March 5th, there was an analysis we gave that was kind of a doomsday analysis of 40% of revenue disappearing overnight and that what would that do given the reserves that we had built into the project? And when would the county start to have liability under the leases, financial liability? And how much would that liability be? Within these amendments are included, in these amendments, there are included additional safeguards financially that Mosaic Quarter Development is providing. So, we have done it, we've re, after March 5th, we had a lot of interest from different groups in town, a lot of different contractual users that want to be in the site. And so, that's caused us to reevaluate, when do we think with our facility management experts think that there could be a catastrophic event that occurs, whether it's external or internal to the project? And we view that with our experts as being three to four years after opening of the iceplex. And so, what we did was we said, "Okay, well, what happens during that three to four-year period, we're actually gonna be doing Phase 2 and Phase 3 during that time." And so, what we voluntarily agreed to do was put in additional $52 million of cash into the debt service reserve that stands as an extra buffer to the county. So, when you combine our $20 million in cash flow, a $42 million reserve that's already in place for Phase 1, and $52 million more dollars, you're talking about $114 million of buffer that covers the debt service should revenue fall precipitously by 40%. Now, what does that mean for the county? In my March 5th example, it was that that would protect the county for a period of 17 years, but still leave the county with 71 or 72 million of potential liability. With these new reserves in place, that time period is extended to 22 years and the financial exposure to the county is reduced to 42 million. Now, I will say that that analysis assumes that we just sit and do nothing and just wait it out and don't make changes, don't make staff changes, don't make programming changes, we don't try to fix it. With an experienced facilities management team that runs 10 different sites around the country and offers 6 million visitors a year at their places, I find it hard to imagine that I or my staff or my facility management team would be sitting idly by while money was going out the door that we had put up. So, I hope that answers your questions to when the county might have an exposure.
And Madam Chair, very quickly, I'm sorry, just one, what would the impact be, not only, you explained what your view would be to the county, what would the impact financially be to any tenants that are existed in that, in that whole project?
In that example, the only impact would be a tenant who decides not to stay.
And of course, that does not bode well as far as an optics if-
Correct.
We have tenants vacating the whole thing.
Right, that, that's why what we did was we analyzed it as a 40% immediate drop in gross revenue on a certain day at the beginning of a year and never recovering because that takes care of that cycle you're talking about where if one thing goes bad, another tenant goes down, usually that takes some time. We analyzed it from the actual, from the lens of it all goes to blank in the handbasket in one day.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Knott.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott.
Chair Gherhava, I have several questions and I'm gonna pose them both to Ms. Lesher or Mr. DeBonus, however you want to have it answered. So, Mr. Debonus? Okay. And, and Mr. Knott. And I've got some questions specific to the financing based on the memo that we got, but my biggest question is probably the one that I think is going to be of greatest interest to the public, which is that Phase 1 substantial and final completion dates are being pushed forward two years, from 2025 to 2027. I would like to know, because it's not addressed in the, the memo, it might have been addressed in, in the background and I missed it, but I'd like to know for, for the public, for the board and for the public, what are the main reasons from both the perspective of the county and, and Mr. Knott, that we had to push substantial and, and final completion forward almost two years?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Scott, I would say just the steps that is taken to move from the development agreement which first established what those completion dates were through the development of the leases. These were all created through the negotiations between Mosaic Quarter Development and, and the county and the amount of time that went into preparing those documents as well as the preliminary development work that had to take place. So, mind you that the facilities that we're talking about in Phase 1, the iceplex, the fieldhouse, the central utility plant are through 100% design and through completion of county review for permit issuance. So, there was a substantial amount of work that went into getting to that point by Mr. Knott and his team. With that, then the county engaged the services of third-party consultants to help us review the packages of refined information that were provided by Mr. Knott. So, you'll remember when the leases came to you, there was a constructibility and, and cost estimation review that was done. There was extensive review done with the credit review rating agencies to arrive at a determination that the project as structured would not have a detrimental impact on the county credit rating. So, that took a significant amount of time, much longer than what was envisioned in the establishment of those substantial completion dates in the development agreement. But I would say that the process worked, it is the massiveness of the detail that has gone into it and the work with which both the county, its consultants and, and resources as well as Mr. Knott and Mosaic Quarter Development have put into getting us to this point.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Scott. So, I don't disagree with anything Mr. Debonus was saying in terms of the lengthy process we went through and all the diligence and the extra time the county staff took. I think there's one extra simple example and that is it's a 34-month construction schedule and that has not changed since we started going through the construction plans with Development Services. And so, when we finish these leases, finish the financing, you look at 34 months to complete the Phase 1 and then you start looking at those dates and that would be the reason for those extensions out beyond the extra diligence that the county staff wanted to do on the project.
Got it. There was, it was mentioned on page 3 of the, the memo and, and you talked about this, Mr. Debonus, in your comments, but neither the memo nor your comments addressed what I'm curious about. There's really no difference in role in terms of what a, a securitization trustee would have accomplished and what a cash management agreement accomplishes. So, why are we changing from the former to the latter? You look eager to answer that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Scott. The reason for keeping the term but changing the meaning of the definition within it is from a securities law compliance aspect. So, our lender needed to change the internal structure of its own setup for this loan and so, it needed the extra definition without change. If we had changed it to, say, a cash management agent or a trustee, it would have meant making 200 different changes to the documents. And so, to keep things efficient and simple, the thought was, why don't we change what makes up the term securitization trustee to match up with the securities compliance that it needs to fulfill? And that way, it makes it a simple change, we don't have to change it all the way through the document.
Got it. Next question, and, and this is probably more for you, Mr. Knott, but Mr. Debonus, if there are items to add from the county perspective, please do. It says, "Under authorization for execution of documents for securing financing in Ms. Lesher's memo, subject to Board of Supervisors' approval of the leases and development agreement, amendments, MQD shall have 20 business days to complete execution of financing documents and close on financing. If not completed by August 14, 2024, the county has the right to terminate the agreement." What are some of the key activities that need to happen during, during that 20-day period in terms of complete execution of the documents and closing on financing?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Scott. The key things, one would be you'll set the final interest rate, which will happen in the next two days, I believe. And then you will start filling in blanks and there's a lot of signings, a lot of paper shuffling, from my end alone, there are 92 different documents that have to be executed and given by different parties, not separate from the leases, that's just on my end. And so, you have, if you imagine a, if you were closing on a home, the purchase of a home, and you're sitting in that title agent's office and there's an endless stream of paper that's coming your way, imagine that being in four different jurisdictions around the country as you're dealing with Arizona, Washington DC, New York, and there's a constant stream of different paper that has to be physically identified, signed, processed, and passed on to the next group. And so, really, it's those types, it sounds like it's a lot of time. Those 20 business days are just built in in case, you know, everybody's got a sick day, something bad happens, there's just cushion built in. But in terms of the loan being finished, in terms of its terms and what it's going to look like and the amount that it is, none of that changes, it's really parliamentary is what I would suggest is the right term to use.
Anything you would add to that, Mr. Debonus from the county's perspective?
So, Chair and, and Vice Chair, the county has been working with Mosaic Quarter Development and all of those county resources that I, that I mentioned to finalize any of those documents that require the county to sign on to. And so, that is the provision within the recommendation to the board that the county administrator be authorized to sign those documents. We've been through extensive review on those things. I would say that they are largely approved with just some finalization cleanup and assembling of those documents that require execution by the county.
Okay, well, your response really set the stage for my next question, which is, if you go to right above the, the recommendations section of Ms. Lesher's memo, it says that, "As per the Board of Supervisors', March 5, 2024, approval of the Mosaic Quarter leases, the county administrator or the county administrator's designee again requests authorization by the board as part of any action to approve the presented leases and development agreement to make any necessary adjustments to the master ground lease, Phase 1 lease, and Phase 1 sublease." What are some examples of necessary adjustments that it might be necessary for Ms. Lesher or her designee to make during this time?
So, and Chair and Vice Chair, the leases that are before you today, right, are based on the need to finalize the interest rate and some of the final execution of the documents as Mr. Knott indicated. So, if there is a term or, or if there is a blank that's included in, most notably in the exhibit sections of the document, then those current versions of the finalized documents would be inserted in, into the lease. So, that's an example of, one example of, of what that may include or look like.
Mr. Knott, anything you wanted to add to that?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Scott, I would agree with Supervisor, excuse me, Mr. Debonus.
He doesn't want this job.
Excuse me, I would agree with Mr. Debonus. I think the other, the other items that need to be signed are things where the county has to actually sign internal easements that we're doing between our different entities under the site where we do need to have the county sign it, where it's temporary, it doesn't run with the land, it's not a permanent action that would normally come before the board if it was a permanent easement, being granted it's just within the lease hold. But then, yes, Mr. Debonus is correct that there's some blanks that will need to be filled in as soon as the interest rate is set or rate as we're closing or exhibits need to be slipped in. It is not, right now, these are the only material changes that would need to be made to the lease documents that you're approving. In my view, that does not include a language change or a liability change that's in those lease documents. It is not something that would normally come under your purview, but slipping in information that's filling in the gaps that has to happen at the last second.
Got it. Thank you both very much. And Chair Gherhava, thank you, your timing is excellent. My question.
I was listening, I promise. Any other questions? Supervisor Lee?
Thank you, Chair Gherhava. And what I would like to say is I don't believe that a doomsday necessarily, even if we had one, would affect Mosaic Quarter. I'll tell you why. If we think about 2008, in our lifetime was a big drop in, in our discretionary income and, and the bottom fell out. During that time, because of discretionary income is less, people don't travel by plane, they stay home. So, what better way to entertain themselves? And obviously, parents are not gonna give that up for anything, especially their children. They're gonna make sure that their kids have those opportunities in the soccer fields, in the ice rinks, whatever.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
I've heard it several times, the interest rate has not been set. Correct?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Christie, that is correct. In any transaction like this, you are proc, you get to, we're resetting the interest rate every day to get close, we're talking a matter of hundreds of a percentage point, so like one or two basis points difference between today and when the loan, and when the final interest rate would be set.
Very often, in any kind of transaction that involves an interest rate, it could make the whole project disappear should the interest rate not be acceptable. Is that a scenario that could possibly happen?
That is not a scenario that could happen, Supervisor Christie.
So, the interest rate, whatever it comes up to be, would be acceptable?
The interest rate is based off of the daily yields in the US Treasury market specifically geared off the 20-year Treasury unless there was a major fluctuation of, say, 10%, not 10% of what exists, but 10 points. That's what, I think that's the scenario you're talking about. It is not a situation where we don't know, you know, the range of which, using traders that we work with to make sure that we're within a realm when we're predicting. So, there's no irresponsibility in terms of getting, getting to today and then down a week from now or two days from now, having a $5 million difference a year in interest rate. We're not in that, that's not a situation we will run into.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Knott, what do you predict this interest rate to be roughly?
Rate around 6.5%.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Knott.
May I respond to-
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and Supervisor Lee. I, I think the point that Supervisor Lee is making is not only wonderful and appropriate, but is apropos for our site. So, in 2008, when you had that financial crisis and disposable income was down, I think Supervisor Lee is absolutely correct that people will stop traveling. And I think that's one of the biggest misnomers about Mosaic Quarter is that it is a travel-sports destination. It is, but the assumption is that 90, 100, 80% of our revenue comes from people coming into Tucson. 12% of our gross revenue is travel-related. The remainder of it is local and of that local, even today, in a good financial, depending on who you would like to talk to, I'm sure there would be disagreements on this, a good financial climate and especially given the range of incomes that we have in Tucson where we're looking at an average price per use of $16. We believe that even in a financial crisis, this is, the site is sustainable for the community, which is our biggest priority. And if travel sports should go away, 12% of our revenue doesn't happen, I'm fine with that because we have the reserves and I predict a 60% loss as the doomsday.
Thank you. I, I think that in the presentations that I've heard and conversations and having children that are involved in a lot of activities, we, families are gonna do what they can to try to give opportunities to their children first and young people first. We just do. All of the parents are nodding going, "Yes, we will go without," so they can do it. So, as long as we keep, and I was glad to hear that you said $15 because I think that that's reasonable and it's something that we can do and also for all of our youth sports and college sports, I think that what we're gonna try to do as a community is make sure that those who don't have the resources within their families are gonna have opportunities to be able to participate. And that's something that I've been asking about because a lot of this is, we don't want there to be this wonderful, you know, you know, top-of-the-line sort of facility that is not accessible to the people that live here. So, I think that that's great that you say that- So I think that that's great, that you say that the vast majority, what we're counting on is local, like building up programs. I think that that's a great thing, because we do need more and more opportunities for our young people. Yes, jump on. And then Supervisor Heinz, did you have a question? Okay, all right. Well, go ahead and answer, and then if you decide, we'll move on.
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes, the $16 price, it was 16, not 15, the $16 price point is affordable to many people, but it is not affordable to anyone. And in the presentation I last gave to the board, and I know Supervisor Heinz was, asked me a question directly about this and was particularly interested in it, was the Mosaic Foundation. And while we're still on plan for a million-and-a-half-year grant budget to those that are less fortunate families in town so their children could participate, and serving over 8,000 children per year, and increasing that, that's per year, not capped, we'll just continue to do that so that we can address every opportunity gap that exists within the community.
That's great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I believe we had a motion in a second. As for discussion only, so now I'll go ahead and let me, I will read. I recommend, this was the recommendation from the county administrator, that, so items 28 through 31, approve the leases and development agreement amendments related to closing of financial, financing for the Mosaic Quarter project, and authorize a county administrator or county administrator's designee to make any further necessary adjustments and effectuate documents necessary to fulfill the county's obligations, and reaffirm the designated reserve funds as noted in the preceding section of the memo, and all, this memo is also attached to all of those items. With the approval of these amendments and the closing of financing, permits can be issued, and construction begin.
Second.
Is that appropriate, covered all of our legal bases on that one? Okay, so we have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. Now, are we just going to go back on the regular agenda? Okay. Of course. Okay. So we're going to go, I'll go ahead and move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes 4-0. Item number seven is a Board of Supervisors' updates. I have one, there's a slide, it's really quick, but basically, I had, we didn't have any official meetings, but we had a meeting with representative, the Board of Health, I'm on a bylaws revision committee that, the revisions that we're suggesting are going to go to the Board of Health meeting, and available for a vote on July 24th. Met with the Regional Affordable Housing Commission representatives, my two representatives are Ann Vargas and Ray Robles, and then I also met with my representative on the Fair Horse Racing Commission. Anybody have any other updates? Okay, all right, thank you. And next, we've done eight, we'll go to nine, 2025 Legislative Agenda. Administrator Lesher?
Excuse me, thank you very much, Chair Guralva. You have a proposed legislative agenda before you, obviously, it's awfully early before the legislative session, but we do it at this point because Pima County is an active participant in the County Supervisors' Association. And the agenda that is approved by all counties to lobby through the course of the year is defined during a summit that occurs the first week of October, for which materials are due in August. So this is the last board meeting prior to submission of materials for the County Supervisors' Association. So while this is early, we think it provides a global structure for the things that we can look at, recognizing that the board can come back at any time to add items to this. What we focused on, what we look at every year, is we ask the departments to look at any kinds of changes or issues that they need to look at that would result from any kind of statutorily mandated procedure that we believe is not beneficial to the public. If the cost has been unjustifiably shifted to the county, excuse me, from the state, we look at mandated services for which the state provides no or inadequate funding to the county, and then existing revenues and authorities from the state that departments have reason to believe might be at risk next year, we focus on those. And then, within that, we look at five issues or tenants that we develop around, the legislative goals around our proposals. One, to protect the Pima County taxpayer. Two, to invest in the infrastructure. Three, maintain or strengthen critical programs. Four, which is to fortify public safety. And then finally, we just look to support the County Supervisors' Association. So you do have a resolution before you today that summarizes the activities or the potential legislative items in those five areas, and seek approval from the board of this plan at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I, our office did submit seven additions to the legislative agenda, and so I just wanted to throw those out as we're considering what was submitted by our county administrator. There are seven additions, there are four that are added to invest in Pima County's infrastructure that have to do with housing. Four, allow local jurisdictions to limit housing rent increases. Five, allow local jurisdictions to adopt inclusionary zoning policies. Six, provide funding to local jurisdictions for eviction prevention programs. And seven, significantly increase state funding for affordable housing projects. And then on item C, under maximize or strengthen critical programs, item seven would be restore state funding for all-day kinder classes. And then, under D, fortify public safety. Three, allow, in addition to allow local jurisdictions to adopt requirements for firearm sales. Five, allow local jurisdictions to eliminate cash bail requirements. So those are the seven that I'm putting out there for our consideration while we're talking about what was submitted by county administration. And Supervisor Lee?
Thank you, Chair Guralva. I also have one additional item that I would want considered under D, which would be D5, to add involuntary commitment for substance abusers. Work with key stakeholders to provide a legal framework to require individuals who are unable or unwilling to seek treatment, to receive treatment for their addiction with the goal of restoring the quality of life for those individuals, and reduce the number of homelessness and criminal activity.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Supervisor Christie?
I'm a little confused in the sense that the legislative agenda that's been submitted by the county administrator, are we now in a position where we're adding things to it and then voting on it, or what's the process here?
So what happened, I believe it was last year, I suggested we add some items, and there was some resistance, because I didn't put them in, in time to be considered at the deadline. So that's why I submitted these, so we'd have them to look at. This is something that would go forward to the whole organization, and then they're voting on them. So these are just things that we're bringing forward as a county to be considered.
When is the deadline?
I believe that Administrator Lesher mentioned it, but you feel free to repeat.
It is the first week of August, I'm looking at the memo, I'm sorry, Chair Guralva. It is the first week of August, so that, as I said, this was the last board meeting prior to the submission date.
And it's going toward, to whom?
I'm sorry, to the County Supervisors' Association for inclusion in the statewide legislative plan by the County Supervisors' Association.
So we're putting it forward to CSA. CSA, the membership, is going to make a decision as to what their legislative agenda is going to be, and then they take that, and see, that's the state agenda. So these are just things for them to consider.
So what will we be voting on today?
We're voting on what we're going to be forwarding to CSA the first week in August. So it would either be what was submitted by our county administrator, with the additions that I suggested, and we can also consider Supervisor Lee's addition.
What would happen if I don't particularly support your additions, but I have additions I want to make?
You can say them.
Okay.
Yeah. But I mean, and the reason, and I think it's fine, I think that we should be able to have this discussion here. The only reason I submitted it as an addition is because I believe you had an issue with us having these conversations from the day is here and not having something to look at, so that's why I submitted it. But yes, I think it's totally appropriate for us to be able to have conversations here.
Well, one of the disappointments that we felt not seeing in the legislative agenda for submitted, is we had some very robust and intense discussions about availability of affordable dwelling insurance in wildfire-prone areas. And this has completely been omitted, we even had the Department of Insurance at the bequest of the chair give a great presentation, there was terrific interchange between residents who are suffering by this, and yet, there's nothing in the legislative agenda, even though we were promised that our lobbyists would work with the legislature to include this, but I see nothing in it.
Well, again, this is just what's going to CSA. So our lobbyists can do their own advocacy work, aside from this legislative agenda that's going to CSA.
And Chair Guralva and Supervisor Christie, because we have been working on it this year, we have, this board has already authorized our lobbyists to work for it, but out of an abundance, to be very clear, happy to add that as an amendment to this, to ensure that we've added the language that the board has looked at before related to the Department of Insurance for the wildfire insurance, happy to add language to that.
And that doesn't mean that CSA is going to take it. So I remember, and I'm sure that you had it with Pima Community College, individual organizations, TUSD did it too, where we're like, we want all of these things added, then it goes on to the National School Board Association, or even Arizona School Board Association, and our items don't get selected. It's the membership from CSA that gets to decide that, so this is just something for them to consider.
So basically, we're going to vote to send this all on, but we're not voting to approve it in finality?
No, we're approving it to go forward, but this is, this does not have necessarily directly tied with the advocacy that our lobbyist is doing.
Okay.
Like Pima County's.
All right, thank you.
Does that make sense? Sure. Any other questions? Comments, additions? I'm comfortable, I'll go ahead and move the seven additions, and then include Dr. Lee's, which is eight additions, to what was submitted by our county administrator. I'll just need a second.
And the insurance?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, and the insurance line by Supervisor Christie. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Lee. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Chair Guralva, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that with all of your items, that you're making a broad assertion for the principle of local control. I don't know if, when some of these items, if they were allowed to be under the purview of local governments, how I'd vote if there was something that came before us, but I think the legislature has a history of restricting local controls, so I see the measures that all three of my colleagues have put forth as reasserting the importance of local control, and I hope that's something the legislature is respecting.
Me too. Well, let me just be real clear, because I have a little resolution number that I was supposed to read that I didn't. This is approving Resolution Number 2024-34 with the amendments that were discussed here at the dais, the seven that I mentioned, the one that Supervisor Lee mentioned, the one that Supervisor Christie mentioned. Okay? And then is that, was that clear Supervisor Lee? You're so good with seconding that? Okay. So have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you do a thumb up? Supervisor Heinz? Okay, great, thank you. Not to tell you how to vote, but I wanted to make sure that I had it documented, that I just wasn't guessing. Okay, so that's 5-0, thank you. And now we're on item number 10, Extreme Heat Mitigation and Response. This, we discussed this item before, and we're bringing it back for more discussion. Administrator Lesher?
Yes, Chair Guralva, at a previous meeting, we discussed the communications plan that would be going forward. We also discussed the administrative procedure to ensure that our employees were protected during this time of year. And the request was to come back with an ordinance as well, we brought that to you today. Just, I'll turn it over to Dr. Garcia to discuss the ordinance, but wanted to just highlight, I believe, it's my understanding that since it is an ordinance, should the board wish to do, take action today, following today's action, there would be a period of, I think it's 15 days of public notice, at which time then there would be final action by the board, and nothing would go into effect until 30 days following that. So just to be clear, that if there's action taken today, it does not go into effect immediately regarding the ordinance.
Until after the major peak of the heat. So it's a 15-day, basically, if we approve this, it goes out to the public, and we get some input and feedback, and then whatever comes back to us, I'm guessing it would be the second meeting in August, right, because of the window?
I believe it's the 19th.
The second meeting in August, if approved, then it wouldn't go into effect for 30 days after that. Does that sound correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Dr. Garcia, Joanna?
Chair Guralva, members of the board, Administrator Lesher, so what you have before you is the best effort of staff to come together on what a proposed ordinance would look like, that would essentially create a contract clause that would be inserted into all new contracts on a go-forward basis. This would be a contract clause that would apply to any of our contractors, and that stipulates under what circumstances the contractor has to, the kinds of things that the contractor has to do if they are doing business with us, and if they have individuals who are working out of doors. This, again, only applies to our contractors, this does not apply to anyone else. This is in concert and in complimentary to all the activities that the administrator has previously described, that we are undertaking in order to mitigate the impacts of heat, both in our community writ large, through our awareness campaigns, and our development of communications collateral for the, for use more broadly, as well as what we're doing internally to make sure that we are minding our own house and keeping our own employees safe. So these are meant to be complimentary. I will add that in recent days, actually last Monday, the federal agency that is in charge of regulation in this space, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, opened its 120-day comment period for a new set of guidelines that have to do specifically with heat workforce safety. I have perused, I have not read them in minute detail, I have gone through those guidelines. They are substantial, robust, and much more than what is being incorporated into the current ordinance. We will be prepared to digest those for you, and to give you a better insight, and to let you know where those go in terms of the incorporation into the current regulatory scheme.
So just real quickly, so let's say we were to move forward with this process, vote on this, vote on, after the 30-day time period, and something goes into effect, and OSHA regulations come in stronger than this language, then historically, what we've been able to do is look at whatever federal regulations have been updated, and then just update this document to reflect if, you know, some of those, some of those guidelines are stronger than what we've approved. Would that be something that we could do in this case?
Chair Guralva, members of the board, that is my reading of it, too, is that essentially the OSHA standard would prevail, and it would be what we would reference in the document.
Okay. I do want to just say that I submitted, our office submitted an addition to item number, it's, item number two, outdoor environment. It reads, outdoor environment means a location where the work activities are conducted outside. And then what we added is the term also includes locations where work activities are conducted inside, but the temperature is not managed by air conditioning or other devices that reduce heat exposure. Examples include, but are not limited to sheds, greenhouses, tents, or vehicles. So that was the only addition. But do we want to have, do we, I, do we want to go ahead and have a little more discussion? Do we want to move it to discuss? I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and move the item with the addition to item number two that I read.
Second.
To the record. Okay, and I have a second by Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, I have a number of questions I'd like to ask for clarity purposes regarding particularly the July 8 memorandum from the county administrator on extreme heat mitigation and response. On page three of the memorandum, it states that- On page three of the memorandum, it states that the county solicited feedback from the county's full workforce, labor unions, and the business community on heat, on heat safety priorities. Could you tell me what a couple of the actual businesses were that we solicited, or the county solicited for this response?
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, I will ask Dr. Garcia for specifics. I know that it was discussed, my understanding, with the Small Business Commission as one, but Dr. Garcia, what are the other folks with whom we spoke?
I do not have that extensive list for you, but we can develop that list, we can provide that list.
Yeah, I would appreciate a list of actual businesses. I did speak this morning at breakfast with the CEO of the Metro Chamber, and he advised me that the county did not reach out to the Chamber on this, but in addition to that element, I would like to have specific businesses, not business groups, but specific businesses that were reached out to for their input in this matter. Secondly, I have to ask, and I want you to bear with me, because I don't mean to be smart, but I'm going to be a smart whatever, your acronym or the actual words, which was, which was created first? It says the Partnership with the Southwest Center on Resilience for Climate Change and Health, and the acronym is SCORCH. Did SCORCH come first, and then the name of the agency, or did the agency come after the acronym SCORCH?
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, SCORCH is the name that was identified by this organization that does not neatly fit the acronym. You're absolutely right.
I thought it was clever. It is, okay. Third item I have is, in the first bullet point on page six, it says the, quote, "Beat the Heat" campaign includes, including social media and paid advertising about general heat safety. How much is being spent by the county, and where is the money coming from on this paid advertising in this campaign?
Sir, Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, much of what is, I don't have the exact dollar value for you today. The resources that will be invested into the communications campaign are largely coming out of the Health Department from our, from grants that we have that are in this injury mitigation space.
And Madam Chair, Dr. Garcia, we've had this Chevron deference ruling from the Supreme Court, and this could apply because this is an administrative issue. What happens if that money that might be coming from the government goes away? Are we, are we going to institutionalize this in the county as another department with full funding and staffing, and, or is this got a time limit as well based on the funding?
And Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, as we've said at other meetings, when we have funding specific to a program or a grant, those positions end in the programs end when the funding ends. Thank you.
That pretty much answers the question.
Thank you.
On, then we go to the bottom of that, page six, says finally, the Communications Department will develop a heat-safe campaign, public workforce campaign, that will educate and slash resource employers about worker workplace safety, especially during high heat months. What employers are we going to be educating?
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, any employer who chooses to access the website and download information about the other heat or any of the documents, as we say, we would resource businesses, we provide brochures, flyers, stickers, things that individuals and businesses might wish to use within their organization, and that's there for any, any business at all to simply access.
Well, you say simply access, but then it goes on to state, it also details that employers must solicit input from their staff, and must develop communication protocols, and must implement workforce protocols for monitoring science. So this sounds like more than a voluntary thing.
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, response to a question about what is possible and what businesses can use may be different than what you might be considering as a specific ordinance.
Uh huh. So that goes on to say that we could potentially expect more private sector mandates in heat-related employee issues over and above our contractors?
Chair Gudhiahla and Supervisor Christie, what we're looking at today is an ordinance that would cover businesses that choose to do business with Pima County in the future, not our current contractors, but anyone coming in in the future. And so any of the information related to how a business communicates with that business's staff and personnel would impact those businesses that contract with Pima County.
So you don't, in this memorandum, you're not including just general private sector businesses, only those that contract with Pima County. You're not going to mandate or put ordinances in effect on any private sectors that are not doing business with Pima County?
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, to be clear, I don't mandate an ordinance, but I don't believe that the, what you have before you today for the board to implement is not for all businesses. It would not impact the entire business community. It would govern businesses that are vendors in the future of Pima County.
Period.
That is what you have before you.
Okay. And after this is implemented with private contractors, and internally with our own employees in Pima County, what's the next step?
And Chair Gudhiahla and Supervisor Christie, we are continuing with public education. If you are asking about what enforcement might be, we do not, we're working now, the only thing that exists at this point is administrative directives and procedures for employees, and we will work with our directors, supervisors throughout the county to make sure that it is adhered to.
And you would not then proceed further into the private sector to implement these protocols and regulations about heat safety into the private sector? That's as far as you're going to go is with the contractors.
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, that is what you have before you today, yes, sir.
And so your answer is no, you will not go into the private sector?
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie, in accordance with the ordinance you have before you today, no, we will not go, there is no plan to expand.
There's no plans to expand?
There is not.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
With this current board and this configuration. I think that that's, no, no, I think it's important to note, like, this is something that the people that are sitting here are voting on. The next board could decide this is not something we want to move forward with at all, so we can only, you know, go forward with an ordinance that whomever is sitting here is approving of. But if OSHA comes back and does a whole other, you know, a lot of other restrictions, or implements a lot of other safeguards, those are things that we would obviously update into this ordinance.
And to your point, Madam Chair, then perhaps would it not be wise to wait until OSHA comes out with its hearings and its input and its decisions before we implement them?
Arguably, I would say no, because we don't, you know, sometimes things move at a glacial pace. So I would rather us put some safeguards in for our employees and our community, and especially those that we're contracting with here at Pima County. And then I did want to just clarify that this is for a contractor from this point forward, so if we have an established contract, like if we have a next job or something with another vendor, this ordinance would apply. I just want to make sure that that's clearly said out loud.
Well, Madam Chair.
Like if we're in the middle of a job.
To your point, a contractor, if he wants to do business with the county, knows he has to comply with these, and that's one thing, but those who aren't doing business with the county and have no desire to do business with the county, they shouldn't be impacted by these ordinances.
And that's not what we're discussing. We're only discussing.
Right, and I'm just trying to get assurances that we're stopping right here.
Well, that's what we're voting on today.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Chair Gudhiahla.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask Dr. Garcia, with regard to the process that is underway with OSHA, is that just internal to the agency, or do they have to get congressional approval for what they are considering?
Chair Gudhiahla, Vice Chair Scott, you're asking me to weigh into an area that is really impacted by the Chevron decision. Under the current regulatory framework, OSHA is empowered to do this. In fact, these, these new sets of regs have been in the process for the last five years. So this is well within the current regulatory authority and process, and it would be implemented if, if history is determinative of how these would be implemented. Once the public comment period is completed, there are small revisions typically made to that, because there's already been commentary about these, and then they would go into effect immediately. How this is impacted by the Chevron decision in particular would be speculation on my part.
And there, if their guidelines go into place, it would affect all employers, whereas our ordinance would only affect people who choose to contract with the county. The memorandum says if OSHA's regulations are not enforced, not, not put into effect, what might cause them to not be put into effect?
Again, this is an area of speculation, right? So, so at times, OSHA and other federal agencies have elected to enforce a component of the, their standards and not others, and so the departments have some broad administrative discretion in terms of that implementation. So, again, I would fully anticipate that this would be the law of the land, as it were, in 120 days, and that the, this would be communicated to all employers, not just our contractors across the nation in terms of what those new standards and procedures are.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gudhiahla.
I'm sorry, any other questions? And so, did we have a motion? Yeah, so we have a motion to approve this item as amended with the definition of the outdoor environment. Right, and staff is going to bring back the ordinance on August 19, and we would vote then to decide whether we move forward or not, and then if we move forward, there's a, a window of 30 days before anything goes into effect, and if approved today, then this is the opportunity for business community, individuals, union representatives to reach out directly to give us input on what they like or don't like.
According to the memorandum, they already were reached out to.
Right, but that's only a handful of people. I mean, at the community at large, we have a lot more opportunities to weigh in. Okay, so, and, okay, so part of this is just to, in the item says, the establishment of a three-year strategic heat plan, heat communications efforts and draft, and that that heat safety ordinance for county contractors is part of this item. Okay, so we have a motion, and who seconded? Supervisor Christie? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes for one with Supervisor Christie voting no. Okay, thank you. Now, item 11 is United States Department, USDA Rural Development Housing, this is that Housing Preservation Grant, and so I'll go ahead and move Resolution Number 2024-35.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? The only question that I have, and I've asked for it a couple times, is can we get a list of the grants that we have applied for, and what is out there regarding housing? So I know that we have, and they don't always come to us for a pre-application, you know, that we move forward with a pre-application approval, but I just wanted to see if we can get some information, and that would be Resolution Number 2024-35. So have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 12 is a monthly financial update. Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Gudhiahla, and we will quickly through this. We do have four slides that I can, the next page, please, just to, as we close out the period for May, oh, that's easy to read. Hopefully you've got a document closer to you that's legible. But at this point, pardon me, total revenues for the general fund will exceed budget by $18 million or about 2.51%, coming in from an all-tax refund of $6.6 million interest income, which is about $2.5 million more than budget, and shared sales tax at $5.5 million more than budget. Next slide, please. Our operating expenditures are forecasted to be under budget by $11.6 million or 1.7%. We have indicated about eight departments that are looking at coming in under budget, and we've listed those in the documents that you'll be able to see, but mostly it's vacancy savings, but other, as well as a variety of changes within labor. Slide three, we have a $5.5 million improvement in the county's financial position compared to the forecast, and primary contributors to the improvements on that are the Sheriff's Department, Recorder's Office, and Behavioral Health. Reminder, Behavioral Health is the manager of the contract, NAF Care, and all of our, the costs and expenses within the jail, healthcare, so lots of dollars that could be saved there. And while we will have the financial, the audited financials will be with you in December of this year, but that gives you a snapshot of where we believe we're headed to the end of the year. And then finally, what we, we know is that we believe at this point we'll have an additional fund balance of $5.6 million that we had not programmed into the budget when we brought it before you. And at the March 5 board meeting, the board approved about 1.5 million, just, just under 1.5 million for affordable housing to come out of any additional savings realized for the year. And so that means that we have a remainder of about 4.1 million additional funds that were not programmed, and our recommendation is that that be added to the contingency fund for the year to expand the $673,000 that was included in the budget, and add that additional 4.1 to the, to contingency fund for next year. That's just the financial update for the last period. We do have staff here from, from Finance and Risk Management, if there are questions or you'd like any additional information.
That's good news.
Yep, it's all good.
Because we were expecting to be in the red, an additional 5.6 million. Great.
Lots of work moving towards that, yes.
Yeah, great, and thank you all for the hard work to do that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Christie?
Just as an observation, the county administrator's update of July, dated July 2, it's entitled a financial forecast, May of 2024. We're in July, so it's really not a forecast. So I'm just suggesting maybe we...
Thank you, Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Christie. We're trying to forecast for you what the future is looking like, based on what the last statements were, and so what's, when we brought to you in the past, trying to indicate, we look at the past memorandums or the statements in order to tell you what, where we have departments that we are working on to decrease costs, look at where we need to go. If, our attempt has been to help you forecast what the next month and the upcoming budgets statements might be, if we need to correct how we have titled that, happy to look at that.
If it was unclear, yeah.
Chair Gudhiahla.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott?
Ms. Lesher, first of all, I would like to both commend your team and the sheriff and his finance team on the significant improvements that have been made in the sheriff's department budget. There are some bulleted items that are noted in the document, and I just wanted to thank both you and, and the sheriff and his team for that, especially the work on the vacancy rate. That is, that is significant, because it has an impact on overtime, as is said. Had a few questions. First of all, you mentioned in your report pooled investment interest revenue projected, was projected at 4.5 million, it will be 7 million. That's a good thing. Why so much higher, and what does that tell us about the future, if anything?
First, I am going to turn to the finance staff, if I may for that, for the specifics on how they're determining those dollars. Thank you. And we have Javier?
Chair Gudhiahla.
Is it Javier Rendon or...
Can you turn on your mic?
Yep.
Chair Gudhiahla, Supervisor Scott, we didn't anticipate the interest rates staying this high this long.
Ah.
That's the short answer.
All right.
Great.
And then, I don't know if this is better directed to Dr. Garcia than to finance team, but how did the Arizona Long-Term Care System refund of $6.6 million come about?
Chair, Chair...
Dr. Garcia.
Do you have that? I think all tax, that's part of our state legislative plan and the work of the state budget, and it was allocations at the end of the budget year, and, and I think that's, gentlemen from... finance can help me, we saw a lot of work going on from County Supervisors Association working with the governor's office and the legislature at the end of the years. We began to look through all of the dollars and the budgets for the year. So I think it was a lot of the work of CSA to allocate the ALTEX dollars back. Is there any additional comments? Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to ask, I'm sorry, were you, any other questions?
Just add one more, because I am seeing this as a concern, not just in this budget year, but perhaps moving forward. How can we best address the contract attorney's line item for public defense services? It was budgeted for 8 million, it's forecasted at 11.3 million. What's in the works to address this, both in this budget year and moving forward?
Chair Gruh and Supervisor Scott, I'm going to turn to Deputy County Administrator Holmes, who has been working, I think, daily with public defense services on that item and may have an update. Thank you.
Yes, Chair Gruh, Supervisor Scott, our OCAC, which is an acronym for that particular contracted attorney line item, you've seen increases actually over course of five years. We're just starting to see the ramifications of that because in the past, we have been able to use vacancy savings, right, to cover the overage. It was, so when you didn't have enough attorneys, given a little context, right, when we didn't have enough attorneys, we subcontract to external attorneys up in Phoenix, right, and because those attorneys were sitting there for so long vacancies, that particular dollar amount was able to cover it. So that's been happening for quite some time. Now we're seeing, because we have a different plan with vacancy savings, a different shift in how we're addressing that. That being said, our, Ben Mandola, who oversees the OCAC, has been tracking those numbers now much more frequently on a weekly basis. We have seen a significant amount of decreases in the amount of contract attorneys that we're using, probably close to about 30% decrease. Why we don't see it right now, we'll see it in the next budget year, is because there's a six-month lag between charges. When you contract an attorney, cases, felony cases, last roughly about six months. So those charges for that contract attorney, we see about six months later. So we're seeing trends right now that suggest that that OCAC rate will go down. Will it go down for the 30%? Those are billing issues that we have to look at, but roughly, that's what we're seeing a decrease. So we anticipate a decrease next year in that OCAC rate, and we're continuing to work with finance. Actually, we're turning those reports in weekly, so we can kind of continue to forecast some of those trends moving forward. In addition, continue to try to retain our current attorneys. I think the more attorneys we can maintain in-house and continue to hire with some of the new practices and some of the new attorney rates are going to be, really going to help us with some of that in the future, along with working on other efficiencies there. Is there some continued checks and balances when we use contracted attorneys, and I feel good that that rate's going to go down? I put a big asterisk in that, all that statement right now, because that's, all that's contingent upon how many cases are being prosecuted, right? And so those numbers are going to shift, right, yearly depending on what kind of stipulations are being made at the initial appearance and then up until trial date as well. There's been a recent movement, probably about, roughly in December, from the courts and specifically in, sorry, from the courts in the state level who have, are asking for us to move quicker or much more quickly through trials, right? So that has had an impact as well. We're going to see kind of the implications of that, but we're looking, quite frankly, into next year before we start seeing some of those decreases in OCAC attorneys, again with the contingency being that we don't know how many cases are going to be being prosecuted, and we've seen a significant decrease in that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gruh.
Any other questions? Okay, I do have a question for the additional amount. I just want to confirm that the 1.4-plus million for affordable housing is in addition to the 5 million that we've already approved and budgeted. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. No vote, we just, do we want to, we don't have action on this one, do we? No. Okay. All right, item number 13 is HR to create a new classification. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 14 is abandonment by vacation, resolution number 2024-36. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 15, Election Day Early Ballot Drop-Off Sites for the 2024 Primary Election. This is resolution number 2024-37, approving three additional sites. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie?
We've kind of addressed this earlier during call to the public, but this could be included with the request for an agenda item on the issues that were raised. Exhibit B in the background is really the only three drop-off sites, and my questions are, are these drop-off sites going to be inside a facility, a building? Are they going to be outside? Are they going to be continuously staffed? And if they're outside located, the drop-off boxes, what is the transfer protocol to bring ballots inside? So if those could be included in the agenda discussion on the election thing, I would appreciate it very much if we could put that in there.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. We've already addressed 16. 17 is Southern Arizona Children's Advocacy Center, and this is an amendment to a contract. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. This item is, is this still cost reimbursement? I know that it's an extension of the contract, but I guess the questions that I have is according to the paperwork in the back, it's an annual cost of $15,570.30. I believe it is still cost reimbursement. So I asked about this in August 2023, November, twice in November, and I just am wondering if there is a legal reason why this can't move to, you know, a quarterly amount or something that's provided in the same contract amount. But I remember when I visited Children's Advocacy Center and other nonprofits, I think it's really difficult to staff and make sure we're meeting all the requirements of different grants if you don't have an amount that you can count on. So this is not just for children's advocacy, but I remember asking about this one specifically. So I'm wondering if I can get some information on that. Okay, so have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 18 is the City of South Tucson contract. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. If the City of South Tucson doesn't utilize this contract, do we just not charge them, or is it a set amount of 5,000? It's just a weird street naming and addressing services, and so it sounds odd to me because the City of South Tucson is pretty set. I don't think they're changing a lot of streets and stuff like that, so I was just trying to understand if we, if we don't use it, if they, you know, don't have to pay for the service. Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gruh, it is an IGA with South Tucson with our Development Services Department, Mr. DeBones, if you have specifics about them.
Yeah, Chair Gruh. So they won't be charged if they're not utilizing services, and so this is part of the county's role as a regional addressing provider, and we do provide addressing services for most of the jurisdictions out there. There is a need for some cleanup of the addressing roles and records, so even though there may not be a lot of new vacant site development within South Tucson, they do have additions of units to existing buildings and things of that nature. So they requested that we assist them in this fashion, and we're happy to help them.
Great, and it's a five-year kind of, okay, great. All right, motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item number 19 is Catholic Community Services to provide a cooperative agreement for the provision of humanitarian services. This is no cost. I believe we're just updating the agreement. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie?
Questions, if you go in the background with the agreement with Catholic Community Services and the county, the county is paying for repair, maintenance, utilities, security, and the fire safety systems of the facility. Why isn't Catholic Community Services paying the county rent?
And Administrator Lesher?
Chair Gruh and Supervisor Christie, this is a service that Pima County is providing, if you will, and we contract with Catholic Community Service to assist in the provision of that service, and have since 2019, I believe, provided the AHO facility for that. Dr. Garcia, do you have additional information?
So the additional, Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, the additional nuance is that the facility itself is owned and controlled as part of the court system, and so that is part of the reason why we require this separate cooperative agreement. The...
Well, let me interrupt you, if I may, just a second. Doesn't Catholic Community Services pay rent on the Drexel facility?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, they do not. If you recall, the Drexel facility was purchased with state resources specifically for the use that we are using, that we have it, that we are currently using it for. CCS is simply the operator of the facility.
And they pay no rent?
They pay no rent. They are our operator.
Okay, Madam Chair, do we have any idea when Catholic Community Services is going to find a permanent home for Cassus Alitis?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, we have never had that conversation with Catholic Community Services. That has not ever been, that has not been an item that has come up. The facility at the juvenile detention center was specifically renovated, remodeled for the purposes of providing the service that is currently being used. It was, we did so because those pods were not being used for anything and could not be used for adult detention of any form per the regulations of the court, and therefore this was the best and highest use for those pods. And when we, when the county undertook that repurposement of that facility, it did so using some FEMA dollars to do those renovations, and we set it aside for that use. Could there be another operator? Absolutely.
Madam Chair, so given the scope that has been announced by Catholic Community Services of reducing their footprint, if you will, on asylum seeking and accommodating them, wouldn't it make sense that they should start looking for another place that's not being subsidized with all those items I mentioned, the repair, maintenance, utility, security that are paid for by taxpayers? Shouldn't that discussion that you say has not been brought up, shouldn't that be broached now?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, you know, we certainly can have that discussion. The reduced footprint is precisely to limit their activities to that physical plant within the juvenile detention center.
Yep, and that's my point. If they're reducing their footprint in that facility, then, and we're still paying, the county's still paying for all of the ancillary items that I just listed, perhaps now it'd be a good time to say, since you're reducing your footprint and the county's still picking up the tab on a lot of stuff, why don't you start looking for another place to facilitate your operation, not at taxpayer expense?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, the footprint is being reduced to just the juvenile detention center facility. It is the point that I was trying to make. It was, it was previously the Drexel facility, the hotels, and the juvenile detention center. It is now just reduced specifically to that square footage within the juvenile detention center.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think that would be, any changes to that would be the direction of the board, right, because it was approved initially. Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll go ahead and move the item. Oh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 3-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number, can we take 20, 21?
I need to speak to 21.
Nope, okay, so 20. I'll go ahead, and this is for ASU Center of Violence Prevention. It's an amended contract. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item passes 4-0. Item number 21, the Arizona Border Regents. This is a Centers for Disease Control Prevention Grant. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion, a second by Supervisor Christie. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie?
In the background on this item, it says something to the effect, if I could find it here, that this program is going to be involved with people who are in the justice systems or individuals involved in the justice system. My question, is this another deflection program?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, no. This is a subcontract from a larger federal grant that has as its target individuals who are justice-involved. That, that means, that can mean a variety of things, but no, this is not a deflection program.
And it says, Madam Chair, to increase, increase in provider awareness or approaches to reduce the incidence of death resulting from overdose in Pima County, and it's training for medical providers. So you're telling me, obviously you've said it's not a deflection program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number, can we do 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27?
26, I need to speak.
Okay, so items number 22 through 25, I'll go ahead and move those items.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Items pass unanimously. Item number 26 is Provide Pima County Safe Streets for All. It's a grant. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion? Supervisor Lee?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to...
Could you turn on your mic? Yeah, thank you.
Apologize. Thank you, Chair Gruh. With regards to this grant, one of the things that I want to mention is that, I'm not sure everyone knows this, but the city of Tucson was ranked out of 101 metropolitan cities, the third deadliest for pedestrians. Memphis was first, second was Albuquerque, then Tucson. And there's currently, one of the things I'd like to make sure that this, this grant is aware of and can look into is the issue we have with outdoor lighting, because I believe the Outdoor Lighting Committee, it is a joint committee between the city and the county, have put forward a draft. This draft has not yet come to us because it's still being worked on, but it was provided to a lighting expert that the city used back in 2012 when they, I believe, when they were involved with changing LEDs to, excuse me, condensant to LEDs. One of the things that he said is that he really recommended that we compare the 2012 to the 2024 assessment of existing lumen caps, and he felt that the listed cap should be maintained or even increased in certain areas. And I understand we are part of a very robust astronomy, dark skies initiative, and I very much support what we do throughout the world and how, how much we are part of making the world aware of what's happening in our universe and beyond. However, we also have a million-plus people that live in Pima County, and I believe that in my own estimation that we cannot afford to have the skies any darker, especially where we have a million people. So I hope that this grant will take a look at some of those recommendations. So I hope that this grant will take a look at some of those recommendations. And I'd like to, a request that that be made, my request be made known to the grantor.
Any other questions? I, I'm wondering why this is something that we can't do in-house as opposed to having a consultant. Administrator Lesher?
Mr. Debonus.
Mr. Debonus.
Madam Chair and members of the board, so this is a region-wide effort. So we're doing it in collaboration with the other jurisdictions. And so it is intended to do broad outreach and gather up public input in looking at different strategies, understanding the data, analyzing it, and then coming up with specific ways to reduce fatalities on the roadway system. So it's much broader than just the Pima County roadway network. It's across all of the jurisdictions. And this particular vendor consultant has experience in doing just this type of effort elsewhere in the nation. So we think that they will be hugely beneficial in getting us to the right place faster than if we were to try and undertake this a little bit at a time on our own.
Okay, and so, because the contract is for one point, almost 1.4 million over two years. And so all of that amount is going to be going to the consultant? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that's the amount that is specific to the consulting contract.
Okay, all right. I'm just wondering, and I'll ask these, and I'm, I appreciate the answer. I'm just trying to figure out how we can lessen kind of our dependence and increase the capacity in-house. So I appreciate your answer. All right, we have a motion and a second for item number 26. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 27 is Traveler Mobility Data and Analysis. This is another one that is a contract with a consultant. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. We've addressed items 28 through 31. Item number 32 is a Morata Unified to Provide License Agreement. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 33 is the Sonoran Institute Living River Project. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Wonderful project. Item, we've addressed 34. Take 35 and 36 together. Sheriff's Auxiliary Volunteers. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Christie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes, items pass unanimously. Can we take 37 through 41?
Could you pull 38 out, please? And you better go through.
Okay, we'll go through one at a time. 37 is Arizona Department of Economic Security. I'll go ahead and, for acceptance for community and workforce development. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 38 is an acceptance of a grant for the county attorney's office. This is for the Arizona State Crisis Intervention Program. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 39 is acceptance of a grant from the State of Arizona Department of Public Safety for drug, border drug interdiction. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 40 is the Arizona Health Partnership. It's an acceptance for the Health Department to, to provide reproductive health care, health services. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Item number 41 is Resolve to Save Lives. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion and a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. We have two hearings, a hearing for a liquor license on 42 and a hearing to revised fee. Or I'll go ahead and do that, that hearing first. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this liquor license on 42? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move item 42.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item number 43, this is a hearing revised fee ordinance, ordinance number 2024-9. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
And Supervisor Scott, seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously. And we're on to the addendum. Item one, we didn't do this in a big presentation, although Alfredo, Dr. V. Valenzuela totally deserves it. We are doing a dedication of a statue on August 10th. And so hopefully he's not watching this because it'll be a surprise. Okay, but I worked with his children to do this. He is amazing. Started the mariachi program at Davis, which ballooned into so many other school programs, and thousands of students have had his tutelage, including me. Before he started mariachi, he was a guitar teacher at Hollinger. Love him. Anyway.
Can you give us a rendition of what you learned under his?
No, I cannot. He encouraged me to sing also, which we all clearly know this is not something we should do.
If you would put that in the form of a motion to...
No, we cannot. It was second grade, let's not. But he's, he's amazing. He actually taught, he taught my, my, my son, like, it was, it was so cool. I have a picture, and he was in kindergarten, was teaching him over the Davis mariachi camp to play the guitar. It was too much. Did someone say something? I'm sorry.
The lawyer.
Oh, the lawyer! Mr. Brown, go.
I usually don't speak up, but Dr. V. taught me accordion in third grade and guitar in fourth grade.
Somebody get an accordion!
He is the man.
He is the man, right? And he's also one of the first mariachi directors to include whatever instrument you wanted to play, you could play it. Where a lot of mariachis are very specific that only females only play the violin. That's not the case. We have a lot of everybody, a lot of diversity.
Attorney Brown, can you give us a rendition of Lady of Spain?
No, no, no. But anyway, I'm very excited. So for those of you, I'll, we're going to be putting it on social media and announcements so you can all go and see the unveiling. But, so I'll go ahead and move this item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Yay, item passes unanimously, as it should. Okay, now, item number four is Catholic Community Services Procurement Concern. This is an item brought forward by Supervisor Christie, and, okay, go ahead and ask your questions.
Thank you, Madam.
Is your mic on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just referring to the county administrator's May 17 memorandum stating that there was going to be serious review of these situations within the Catholic Community Services contract. And I was hoping that she could give us an update on the management and her findings, not only included with the contract for the laundry service, but if there were any other irregularities that came up on this.
Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, thank you. Chair Girihalva and Supervisor Christie, let me cut to the chase on that part of that and say there were not other irregularities other than this one contract. And that, just as a little bit of history, it was the Catholic Community Services CFO contacted us and self-reported that we had an issue relating to both conflict of interest and a procurement process with a vendor. Individuals from Catholic Community Services who worked with those, that contract are no longer with Catholic Community Services. It's caused, we began, we've self-reported to the federal government. Those concerns, we've looked at every other contract that Catholic Community Services has, and at this point, we're looking through every contract, have not seen any other irregularities other than this one. We also, as I indicated and you've put on the agenda Supervisor Christie, the first day that we became aware of this, May 17, when we notified the board, we also convened with Chief Civil Attorney, Mr. Brown, and individuals from his organization, from the county attorney's office with staff, to review all of the documents and to see if there was any potential for any civil or criminal action that might need to come forward on the part of the county attorney's office. And they, none, they have, that has not, they have done the review, and there is no indication that there is either civil or criminal penalties that they might be pursuing at this time. Correct? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, there were some terminations of some individuals as a result of this?
Chair Girihalva and Supervisor Christie, to be clear, there was a termination and a resignation.
Okay, were there any other terminations and/or resignations other than those two incidents?
Chair Girihalva and Supervisor Christie, not of which I am aware and I'm looking at, no, sir, those two only.
And Madam Chair, Ms. Lesher, could you give some insight as to what your feelings are as to the pretty significant turnover of management of the Catholic Community Services? There's, the directors resigned, there's been a number of high-level turnovers. Is this related to this contract, or what is your findings on that?
Chair Girihalva and Supervisor Christie, I think the two individuals who are no longer with Catholic Community Services, I would venture to say that is a direct result of this contract. The individual who runs Catholic Community Services, Elena Dwyer, is new. She's been with Catholic Community Services about a year, just hit about a year. Many of us knew Peg Harmon, who had that position before Peg. Boy, I'd hate to venture to guess, Peg was with Catholic Community Services forever, approximately, and hit about a year ago a normal time to be retiring and did so, and was replaced by Ms. Dwyer at that time. And I believe Ms. Dwyer reports to a board and to Bishop Wiesenheimer, so working through the, through to the bishop of the diocese here.
Okay. And Madam Chair, the only other request I would ask is that the county administrator, if you could provide a written synopsis of your finding to the board members?
Chair Girihalva and Supervisor Christie, I shall. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Lesher.
Thank you. I do just want to say that Catholic Community Services has shown the people of our nation, who we are as a community, one that doesn't turn our back on people in need. I'm grateful for Catholic Community Services for their work in providing aid, shelter, and compassion to asylum seekers coming through Pima County. Their work has made it so asylum seekers passed to sponsors across the U.S. are safe, and so our community has been safer too. They were instrumental in avoiding street releases, which would have created stress on our local community as well as for asylum seekers. The management of a program like this with so many moving parts is difficult, and Catholic Community Services has, in my experience, worked well with Pima County in ensuring as smooth a process as possible. Administrator Lesher with county experts met with CCS leaders and believe that they are taking appropriate corrective actions to this procurement issue. Catholic Community Services has also taken disciplinary action to those involved in this. I appreciate the abundance of caution in dealing with the situation of our Pima County administrator in resolving this issue, and believe that we have taken appropriate steps to deal with it. With this said, I'm glad that our county administrator has provided us those details and, you know, we'll defer obviously to her regarding the details of this issue, and you'll be providing more to us. I appreciate that. Okay, then, so we've dealt with four, and now we are on five. The Constable for Justice Precinct Number Four, I know we discussed this at our last meeting. Have we done the background check that we kind of outlined with the last appointment that we had?
Chair Girihalva, regarding this individual, we have not. The, the individual has supported, has provided all the paperwork necessary to be a candidate to be on the ballot, and so that provided some additional information than you had indicated in the past. We're happy to go through that process, as you delineated for the JPs in the past, and do that either following a tentative approval and/or bring this back on August 13.
Yeah. I know that this is, I appreciate the only person that has been able to put the paperwork in necessary to fill this vacancy and will, barring something else, is as the only candidate will be appointed. And I'd like to see them be able to participate in the trainings that are coming up. I do think it's important that as a member of this board, that when we approve these vacancies, that they've gone through a process in order to ensure that there's a background check. I'm not anticipating that there'll be any findings, but I would like to recommend that the board appoint Tracy Etherich Nelson to fill the vacancy. It's at the August 13 Board of Supervisors meeting. And I think that before then, we would do a background check. So perhaps we don't need to take any action on this and just bring it forward to the 13th? Does that seem fair? Okay, great. All right. And then item number six is the State Board of Equalization, appointment of George Garcia. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Have a motion to second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Item passes unanimously.